All right, stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the Select Board of Long Meadow. I am Select Board Chair Tom Lucusa. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine.
Yes.
Vinit Hamavati.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwirko.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Corinne Mies-Meuns?
Here.
Muns? Mike Barbieri?
Here.
Okay. The open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda in the town's website, identifying on how the public may join. There's no chat or QA function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along with the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand. When we get to the comments section of the meeting, I will call on you to approach the microphone. And residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar using a phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. No recording. They will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as we get started. Please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a few announcements. I know most of you are wondering, you know, when are we going to have another town, all-town meeting? And so we are going to have a fall special town meeting on Tuesday, November 7th at 7:00 PM at the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. For additional information, visit www-longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. Please note that the warrant will be available on the webpage on October 23rd. The Long Meadow Community Preservation Committee seeks new projects. The Long Meadow Community Preservation, or CPC, has announced, is now accepting applications for projects, recommendations utilizing Community Preservation Act funding. Applications are available in the town clerk's office or online at the Long Meadow website/civicalerts. Applications are to be received at the town clerk's office no later than Wednesday, November 8th for consideration and approval at the spring 2024 annual town meeting. The Long Meadow Cultural Council grant applications, they're seeking applications also, and the application deadline is October 17th. The Mass Cultural Council finds and manages a network of 329 local cultural councils across the state, representing every town in the Commonwealth. Each council awards money based on individual community cultural needs as assessed by the LCC members. Applicants may apply directly to the councils. For additional information and to fill out an application, please visit the Long Meadow website backslash civicalerts. The Long Meadow Leaf Program, the town of Long Meadow will provide curbside bagging leaf collection again this fall. Curbside collection of the town, you know, P-A-Y-T leaf bags will be held on Saturday, November 4th, Saturday, November 18th, and Saturday, December 2nd. The schedule is subject to change due to weather. The residents who are putting out bags for collection are advised to take them to the curb by 7:00 AM on those Saturday mornings. And the town of Long Meadow P-A-Y-T leaf bags are available for purchase at the Long Meadow Big Y. Get more information on the Leaf Program, visit the town website, Okay, next we're at resident comments. Is there anyone in the audience? Yes, okay. You want to make a comment? Why don't you step right up first? And we'll start with just give us your name and your address, and you're welcome to speak.
Larry Goldberg, 159 Redfern Drive here in town.
Okay.
I forwarded some emails to the Select Board already. I'm just a little confused. As someone that has been in town a long time and has tried to follow some of the rules, these bylaws that are outdated, but yet we're still enforcing them, I'm having a problem when they're not equally and fairly enforced. When I try and reach out to the department, I get two different stories. When I spoke to Lynn Simmons last fall before the positions were filled, she told me her expectations of how it was going to be handled. That's how it started. Now it went back to a different way. Some of the wording in some of the bylaw chapter section codes say one thing, like vehicular storage of commercial vehicles shall be in a garage or not in sight, and then it says like van and truck. It doesn't say no cars, no SUVs. Then I get told that an SUV is not part of what a commercial vehicle is. According to my insurance company, according to the registry, a vehicle with a commercial plate is a commercial vehicle. Doesn't matter if it's a Pinto, a Mercedes, a truck, a dump truck, it's all commercial. So I'm just trying to get some clarity, and I'm also trying to get some clarity as to how we're supposed to tell code enforcement of if we have a concern of someone in our neighborhood that may be bringing home a letter truck or a commercial vehicle. Lynn originally told me with the new position of hiring the two people, their job was going to be drive around the town of Long Meadow. If they see a violation, knock on the resident's door, try to educate them the best they can. If it continues to be a violation, then fines may happen. That's not the way it's happening. When I try to reach out to the head of building department, I can't get an email back, I can't get a phone call back. I then sent a letter or an email to Lynn Simmons. Lynn responded back that she was in receipt. I'm going to, Corinne then responded back, and Paul still hasn't gotten back to me. So the building guy is still not explaining to me. The town's answer is, okay, if I don't like what this code said, file with the zoning board of appeals for $100 to object to their decision. So I'm just concerned. I do realize that a lot of these rules are outdated because people have changed with the times, but the rules are the rules today, and they should be enforced equally and fairly today.
Okay. Thank you. We don't generally respond back.
That's fine.
So thank you. All right. Do we have any other folks online or in the room?
I do not see anyone on Zoom.
I don't see anyone else. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to interviews and appointments. I don't know if the DEI interview was postponed, but is Peter Thompson in attendance?
Yes, he's in the Zoom. I'm going to bring him in.
Okay. And it's always nice when he speaks with us. He's reapplied for his council. I don't even know how many times, Peter, you'll have to tell us, but he's got the best microphone of anyone who calls into us. So let's enjoy that. Your mic is off still.
Muted. Here we go.
All right.
Am I unmuted? No?
I can hear you. We can't see you.
All right.
But.
Can you see me?
No.
I'm not that great to look at, so that may be okay.
I imagine you're in your studio as late last time.
Yeah, I'm in the studio. I didn't expect. Oh, there we go. Okay. Now I've got the regular stuff. Here I am.
So, you know, we want the regulars, your name and address, and then your interest in the thing. But how many years have you been on this? How many times you met with the board?
I have, I started being on the board, I believe, a year after I retired in 2008. So I'm not counting, but it seemed at the time to be a way that I could help the town out because it's a worthwhile thing, and I have know something about the cultural interests of the town. And so I've continued to re-up every time I have to, and I enjoy it. I think the amount of money that we are able to give out, of course, it varies from year to year depending on what the state passes on to us and so on, but we get to review the grants, and we have gotten to provide a lot of neat cultural opportunities, I think, for people in Long Meadow who have seen things that have been approved and funded by the cultural council. So it's, I enjoy doing it. I don't see a time when I don't want to do it at this point. So I'd appreciate it if you approve me and let me do it.
All right, thanks. Is there any questions from the board? Okay. Well, thank you for checking in with us, and we'll get back to you for the next meeting and let you know. All right.
Thank you so much.
All right, good night.
Thanks. Have a good meeting, guys.
Yeah. All right. So we also had two residents who were interviewed for the boards and committing vacancies at prior meetings. Would anyone like to make a motion for their appointments? We need a person for community preservation and capital planning.
I'll make a motion that we appoint William Harbison, or reappoint William Harbison to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term, expiring in June 2026.
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All those in favor? Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dustin McDonald, McConnell, excuse me, to the Capital Planning Committee for a three-year term expiring June 2026.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor? All right. And the municipal task force appointments, we have nine candidates who were interviewed at the September 5th meeting of the Select Board. Their resumes are attached to tonight's agenda. Would any members care to comment on this, or is there a motion for appointments? We had talked about perhaps appointing all nine.
Yeah, I think in the last meeting, we were, after a conversation, I think we all had some agreement that we were comfortable appointing nine people. We were just holding off to see if another applicant would appear to do an interview. He's not here, so I feel like we can move forward and appoint these nine.
Mike, have we heard from Dr. Luck?
All right. Anyone else?
You can make the motion.
No, no, I just want to know if anyone else wants.
Well, we'll continue discussion too.
Okay. So I moved to appoint Peter Worley, Krishna Guraswami, Estelle, Jordan, Benjamin Tansky, Mike McLean, Henry Lanewett, David Hart, Benjamin Brown, and Kalani Silva to the municipal fiber task force.
Okay.
Second. Second.
In second. Okay. Any further discussion?
No, I think that having nine people, I hope it's not too unwieldy, but I think I want to hear a lot of voices on this. So I think this is a good way to go.
All right. But have we, have we put together a charter or charge or deliverables or whatever you want to call it, timing and any of that? Vinit, we threw you in charge, which is great, but I guess, I guess maybe we can ask that when you get going, you come back to us and say, here's what we think we can do and when we can do it. Maybe that's a better way to do it.
Yeah.
But I hate to see this drag on for months and months and months, but.
No, I do not want.
But I don't know what it takes. Well, I don't know what it takes. It may take six or nine months. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, you know, to the folks that are going to be appointed, you know, if anyone's watching, we'll probably send out an email like next week with, you know, next steps on meeting times and all that. But yeah, no, Mark, I'll be reporting back.
Great. All right, great. So if all of those in favor of the motion, say aye. Raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. Well, welcome, members of the board of the committee, and we'll, the task force meeting, we'll look forward to hearing from you.
Good luck.
Yes, good luck. So the Select Board, do we have any comments from the Select Board? Yes.
I have one directly on point with that Lynn and I met with a Comcast representative, two representatives, and then Leahy, who is kind of the government outreach, and a gentleman whose name I don't have handy, who was talking, the meeting was about the network and how Comcast has been making upgrades. They want us to know that. They also want us to know that it's very hard to have a municipal fiber, which they would say that, and that's fine. But they did, a helpful part of the meeting to me was there is a program that we're going to work with the Adult Center and Veteran Services, a couple other places to get out, that provides free internet to people who otherwise qualify for federal assistance, Medicaid or SNAP, EBT. So there's a few, if you qualify for that, you probably qualify for free internet as well. So it's their lower tier, it's 30 bucks for the tier, but if you qualify, it's zero. So if there's people in town that can benefit, I think that's fantastic. So I hope that we can get that information out there. But if anybody has any questions on it, email me, email Lynn, and we'll get the information to you and hopefully post it out to the Adult Center.
Okay, great. Any other Select Board comments?
I attended a Pioneer Valley Transit Authority meeting this week or 10 days ago, and their finances seem to be doing okay. There's much discussion, and I think the reason I'm commenting is because they're looking for public comment. As people may know, there's a lot of discussions, especially in Commonwealth, about providing free transit services, you know, just going totally free. Obviously, at this point, Pioneer Valley would be hurting if they just kind of threw open the doors. But obviously, there's some interest in subsidies from the state, and if people are interested and wish to comment, I recommend they go to the Pioneer Valley's Transit Authority's website, because there is an opportunity for people to comment about the potential for literally free buses around the Pioneer Valley.
All right. Well, that's good. Thanks for keeping us posted on that. All right. Next is the Town Manager's Report. Assistant Town Manager Corinne Mies-Meuns-Muns? How do you pronounce your last name, Muns?
Mycie Muns.
Mycie Muns. Okay, thank you.
So first we'd like to announce that the town treasurer collector, Erica Brunel, passed the Certified Massachusetts Municipal Treasurer exam and has earned the credentials of a Certified Massachusetts Municipal Treasurer. So congratulations to Erica. Erica will be awarded the certificate at the November Fall Meeting of the Massachusetts Collector and Treasurers Association. During the Select Board comments at the September 18th meeting, it was brought up that Unibank had lost its FDIC standing. Lynn reviewed these comments with the finance team and confirmed that Unibank became too large and as such is no longer part of the FDIC as of September 30th. FDIC is still providing coverage for a year following. However, the treasurer collector is still waiting to hear back from them to see what type of coverage they will be offering. For example, a collateral agreement is very common. Sustainable Material Recovery Grant Program award. The town was awarded another Sustainable Materials Recovery Program municipal grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $22,000 to enhance the performance of the municipality's waste reduction programs. The recycling dividends program provides payments to municipalities that have implemented specific programs and policies provided to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. Municipalities receive payments, payments according to the number of criteria points their program earns based off of the 2023 grant guidelines and the number of residents served. The RDP, which is the Recycling Dividends Program, provides an incentive for municipalities to improve their recycling programs by implementing the best practices and rewards, oh, and rewards communities with model recycling and waste reduction programs. In 2022, the grant was spent on the following: valley green shred events, the blue overflow bags, compost pails, blue recycling bins, and printing of the curbside trash and recycling calendar and recycle center pass stickers. This is an increase from the 2022 grant, which was an award of $20,900.
Okay. So any questions on the Town Manager's Report? All right. Well, that's, so at least $2,000 more, a little bit more than that for recycling. That's good. We have some old business in terms of approval of the minutes of August 7th. Received a couple of drafts to that and corrected one in an email. Do I motion to accept the minutes?
I'm over your accept the minutes of the August 8th Select Board meeting.
This is August 7th here.
August 7th.
Oh, good. All right, thank you.
Second.
You don't make many mistakes, Mark. I was surprised I caught you.
Second.
And we have a second. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, great. New business, the fall town meeting. We have a draft of the warrant to review. So the agenda is a copy of the draft warrant and a memo from the town manager detailing each article, and two copies of citizen petitions received and certified by the town clerk. The town moderator is also here. I know we usually go through this and then, you know, she may join us at some point, but we may want to ask her to join us sooner, but I'll leave that up to the board. Because as we look at the warrant, it's a bit different than what we're used to. And the, and I think the biggest thing that you'll notice right away is that we have citizen petitions in the top slots, like one and two. And this was suggested, the town has set up a booth at different events, and folks suggested we have these types of articles right at the beginning. You know, we talked to Lynn about it in our meeting, and, you know, the only thing is, some people arrive late, and so this zoning issue is a big issue. And if they didn't get to vote on it, I mean, that would kind of concern me a little bit. So I know usually we have a couple of articles that are sort of warm-up articles that are standard, you know, small transfers of funds kind of thing. So, you know, we, we could, we'll decide the order. The boards decides the order. So I don't know, when you looked at it, if anyone had any reactions similar to mine, or, yeah.
I mean, I agree with the memo that was put forward. I mean, I think a lot of us were at the Pride event as well as the Fall Festival, and it just, you know, whether you're at the grocery store, just walking around town, a lot of people talk about, you know, they have kids and they need to get home early, and this is a really important vote for the town, the citizen petitions that are in front of us. So I'm in favor of bumping these articles up. If it means we move it to, you know, the fifth article, I think that's fine, and have a couple, like you said, warm-up articles first, just to, if folks are arriving late from, you know, their kid's soccer practice or something like that, I think that's totally fine. What I don't want to see is we wait until, you know, the three hours into a town meeting and folks miss the vote. So.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea, and, but I'd also like to hear from the moderator and see what.
All right. Well, let's, let's talk, and then we'll invite her up. Mark, did you want to?
I guess I agree, Dan, with you that, you know, if we put it last, there's going to be a motion to move it up. So, you know, we might as well move it up. I think, again, Tom, I think you made a good point. If we put it first, it's likely be, you know, people are still checking in, there's still, if there's a big crowd. I don't think first is the right place to put it. Somewhere in the middle, I don't, I don't know, but if you want to do five, six, seven, I think, no. I do want to make a comment, though, that people say that these are the important things. I mean, the money's the important, there's some really important other items on this agenda, and it's a shame that people come and say, I'm voting and I'm leaving. I understand they have many things to do, and many people can't stay all night. But, you know, it's not that these are the important issues. They're all important issues, and I think it's important that we get that across, especially when we're talking about $2 million in free cash that we're looking to appropriate here. So don't short-stay the rest of the warrant articles, and I hope people who come prepared for the agenda.
Okay. Josh?
Yeah, I'm, I think that the first five go so quick, I don't know if putting them there. For some reason in my head, seven and eight seems to be the sweet spot. I would even put them after the pools, because I think that that's also something people are very interested in. And Mark's right, the money, I hate when I hear, well, I want to vote on that and then so I can get out of here. Because a big thing for this rezoning is people may be thinking of tax revenue. Well, where's it going? All these other places. Should know everything that's going on. Maybe you can't stay the whole time, but, you know, that's, we can game the system or try to, but people are going to move it up. But I think if it's not too far back, maybe they'll let it lie. So I would suggest nine, put them at nine and 10.
Okay.
Actually, I guess there would be seven and eight if everything moved up. So never mind. Seven and eight. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I also agree with moving articles of higher public interest to the, you know, beginning. When people are, want to vote and make their voice heard, I think that we should make it easier for them to do so. You know, we can't force people to care about every article, or we can't force them to stick around and vote on every article. But if people really want to vote on something, we should make it easier for them to vote on that. You know, I think that, I guess I'm not as, I mean, I guess having maybe one or two warm-up articles makes a little bit of, makes sense to me. Pushing it further back, I mean, with the beginning of town meeting, there is a lot of kind of, there's a lot that happens before we actually start voting. You know, there's awards we give out, there's the Pledge of Allegiance.
Not at the special fall town meeting.
Or, well, okay, well, there's Pledge of Allegiance. I mean, the town moderator goes through all the rules and everything. So there actually is, you know, a good amount of time before we actually start voting. So, you know, I would be fine with, you know, start, if we wanted to start it, like do Article Three and Four as the citizen petitions. But I don't think we need to put it too far back.
Okay. All right, good. Well, do we want to hear from Rebecca? Dan, you were saying?
I think so. I mean.
All right. Rebecca, would you join us? Our town moderator?
She's the best moderator in Massachusetts, yeah.
Rebecca Townsend, the best moderator in Massachusetts. We hear, maybe Connecticut, maybe all of New England states, who knows? But you must have pondered the same thing about the order, right?
Well, you know, one of the fascinating things about town meeting is that it provides for issue education for all voters. People who come to town meeting learn about the various issues that are at the forefront of the town's work. And through deliberation, people come to understand things more than their initial reason for coming to a meeting. And for years, one of the things that people had been asking me about is, well, for those articles that are very high interest, that have a lot of people talking, why are they placed at the end of the meeting? And that's just been tradition. Other towns have different traditions. And as we grow and change, we can learn about how do we adapt our traditions to what voters are interested in seeing today. Voters are interested in seeing those high-interest articles placed earlier in the evening. And that was something that I had mentioned to the town manager as well, and I was very pleased to see that she had incorporated a recommendation to move those articles that are likely high interest, those that have gained at least 100 signatures to be placed on the warrant for the special town meeting too early in the warrant. And that's what I advocate. So I appreciate that the Select Board is taking this very seriously and is leaning in this direction. I leave, obviously, any particular recommendation to you about, you know, should it be one, two, three, four, seven? That is your purview, properly, your purview. But I can recommend the earlier to make it easier for voters. Voters, especially for those who are first timers, may stay around. They'll learn about the other issues. Some may leave. But at least this first foray for folks coming because of a high-interest article, it gets them used to the process. And so I would encourage that. I would also encourage the Select Board to develop a consent agenda for articles that are more routine and publish that if it's possible with the warrant. Often, we've been doing a good job about putting the consent agenda out with the warrant at town meeting, but the more advanced notice that people get, again, it serves voter, voter interest.
Okay, that sounds good. And the, you know, we usually have members of the town who step up to the microphone and ask for this, to be move forward, and we vote. So this is just make it a little bit easier for those people who are going to ask to move it up anyways, so.
I appreciate you understanding.
Mark Gold.
Rebecca, thank you for your comments. I'm a little concerned about it. Rebecca, thank you for your comments. I'm a little concerned about a consent agenda at the Fall Town Meeting only because so many of them are money issues. And it's, it gives the impression that we're trying to railroad through money and spending. And whether we are or not, that impression bothers me as opposed to saying, you know, we've got very few kinds of things. I've looked at, you know, three, four, five and six and, you know, they could go very quickly, you know, and they ought to go, they all should go very quickly. But in fact, I don't know what they're going to do and it would, I would be concerned that we put together monetary, you know, when we're pointing people to the Goldway Trust in the spring or things like that, you know, that doesn't bother me nearly as much as some of these things which are all financial. And so I'm going to encourage the Select Board to try to stick with these the way they are because they are pretty much financial. I would also, my personal comment is that in terms of the warrant article that will have potentially the most effect on every resident in Long Meadow is Article 32, which is municipal, you know, aggregation of electricity. Because if it goes forward, people have a chance to really make a difference in their electric bill. So people are saying, well, you know, this doesn't bother me, this doesn't bother me. We've actually got last, the one that may impact people the most. Now, there's going to be at least two, maybe three more chances to vote on that at town meeting. So I'm not too worried about, you know, how that's going to go this time. But I think people need to understand that, as I said before, you know, we don't put on things on the town warrant because, you know, for our health, we do it because we need to run the government.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just a quick comment. I appreciate, Mark, your comments very much. And generally, recommendations for consent agendas are those recurring things, the regular, for which there's unanimous support on Finance Committee or in Select Board. It's routine matters. Anything in particular, I'm firmly in agreement with you on that. Thank you.
Yeah, and we have a number of items on this that we still haven't heard back from the Finance Committee on. So so that's something we may address as we go along. So I think the best thing was to go through the articles. Yeah?
Do you mind if I ask Rebecca a procedural question? So somebody emailed me today and asked, they're not going to be in town for the meeting. They asked if there's a way to make a statement in absentia. So by proxy or do they have to give it to someone? Can they give it to someone to read?
That has come up before. We don't usually allow that mainly because it is an in-person situation. If somebody has a few words that they've, you know, if, you know, I want to share the words of so-and-so, you know, a brief quoting, but to read a speech from somebody else, it's, you're representing somebody else and we represent ourselves.
So they could read it as if it was their own words, not a tribute?
I'm not going to get into plagiarism questions, but.
That's like plagiarism, yeah.
But no, no, no. In all seriousness, you know, if somebody has a quote from somebody else they want to share, that's perfectly fine.
But this is, you wanted to put a comment into the record and I think it would have to be through.
They have to.
Give it to someone else. Don't say it's from you. They didn't hear from me, though.
I'll never know.
Tom, I think it's worth noting that Article two is citizen's petition. It's something that would, one would hope in the future would go through the Traffic Committee that was established last, at our last meeting. I mean, it's, it's really unfortunate that we, somebody went to the trouble of writing up a petition, getting 100 signatures for something that's a traffic issue, for installing a flashing light in the sidewalk. And frankly, I'm not even sure, because I haven't looked at the location because it's not subject to us reviewing, whether it's a smart thing to do, the right thing to do, financially worthwhile to do. It doesn't say how much it's going to cost or any of that stuff. And yet, you know, we're, if it passes, we're bound to do this without it having gone through any review by anybody at the town. And it's very much like when we get people going to the Community Preservation Fund and telling the town, we want you to spend, you know, X number of dollars to do such and such a thing. So it is there. It's a citizen's petition. We will address it. I think the the issue is though, that I think there's a mechanism for dealing with these, hopefully that will preclude things like this from happening in the future.
Right. And again, you know, when we look at things that will affect our roadways, they always have to meet, you know, state approval in terms of what's acceptable and so forth. So. All right. So the first two articles.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things that I had encouraged with the previous clerk, and I'll reiterate with the current clerk, if anybody has questions, and I'll reiterate publicly here. If people have questions about citizen petitions, before they actually file them, I can advise on general process and explain how things would go and what the likely outcome of an article, even if it's approved, would be if there's no funding attached to it, let's say. And so, but before it gets filed, I can share with a citizen about what that process is. Once it's filed, it has to go in. And so as a general matter, I'll take that up with the clerk in case he gets any questions about future citizen petitions.
Well, thank you for your offer. Well, let people, well, you've let people know.
Yep.
And hopefully the clerk could make that known also. All right. So we'll go through this warrant. So the first one, we already talked about it, is a change to the zoning district that's described and it's basically the land of the, where the first church, the Christian Scientist sits on William Street and Frank Smith Road. And so they will present that. And the second citizen's position is for installing flashing lights to cross, a crosswalk and sidewalk for safe passage of pedestrians on Emerson Road between Riverside and Essex. And so we will decide where we're going to place those. We don't really need to approve those or anything. They're all set. Article three is to vote to transfer available funds in the Treasury with a sum of $14,366.72 for paying prior year's bills.
I'm, we accept Article three.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. And discussion, Mark? Do you just accept it? Any other?
This is classic.
Pretty straightforward. You have to pay the bills.
Yeah, we got to pay our bills.
Okay.
Needs a four-fifth vote, I think, right?
Any further discussion? Yeah?
The only question I had was, so we're going to go through all of these. I'm trying to remember from last year, we'll go through all of these. Then it goes back to, we'll get the Finance Committee, they'll say recommend or not recommend.
We have to put them on the warrant and then they get the vote whether or not they recommend them or not. But they don't recommend anything if it doesn't get on the warrant.
Gotcha.
So actually, what I think was intended, would be done in the past, is we reviewed the warrant on the first day and then the second time it comes back on October 16th, that's when you vote to close and set the warrant articles. So you could actually take the votes that night if you'd like because it's not going to the Finance Committee until after the 16th anyway.
It sounded like in the memo that we were just going to kind of review these and take a, you know.
I guess it's up to how you guys want to handle it, but usually we review it and then the next meeting we would vote on it. But, I mean.
All right. Well, we could, you know, we could vote in the ones that are pretty straightforward and if there's ones we have questions about, we can vote them in at the next meeting, it sounds like, right? So. So we have a motion on the table for Article three. Is there no further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And Article four is to vote and transfer available funds. Oh, I'm sorry. No, yes, it is, yeah. The sum of $34,628.95 for the purpose of increasing the operating budget for repair and maintenance of fire equipment. And so it talks about ladder one. We have our fire chief here. You want to step up and tell us a little bit, John? Appreciate that.
Chief, don't sell what's already been bought. If you have any questions, gentlemen, please, please let me know.
Okay, so, so there was a.
I'll move you accept Article four.
So move, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And do you want to just tell us, you know, about the?
Yeah, I just call this a good news, bad news article. We had some mechanical failures this year. We had a couple pieces of equipment that aged out, broke, they're not. But the good news part of it is we brought in $151,000 in grant money to offset that. There's a copay with that, so let's pay that off too. So.
Okay.
So I think I'm giving you more than I'm getting.
So the original price would have been $34,000 plus? How much it would have been?
Total what I need, and this article is for the $34,628.95.
Because we got a grant for $151,000.
Yes.
So.
Tom, my take on this is that, and there's a few, this is a repair. We need, we need, you know, normally, I hate spending money in the fall when we should, in special capital money, when we should be doing it in the spring as part of capital planning. But this is a repair. We need it to run our ladder truck, you know, and, you know, we've got a piece of equipment, it's not operating. I, you know, we just need to do this and we need to do it quicker, sooner rather than later, I guess. And that's, that's one of the reasons I'm, you know, just saying we should just move forward with Article four.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree, but I, my question is just is, we had this one repair, that's 25% of the budget. Is that, do you need to up the budget or is this just such a big thing that happens?
So in our, in our budget, we put in exemptions in there. So major failures are not incorporated into our budget. So this would be considered a major failure. So really, the system is built to either come back to Fall Town Meeting or Spring Town Meeting or Finance Committee when these things happen. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen very often. I only, I think I've only had to do it twice since I've been chief.
Oh, that was really my question. Is this something that happens often enough that we should?
If I could just comment on the thermal imageries, those are one of those gap items. They're not large enough to meet the capital planning requirements. So those are almost an item that I either have to grant from, which we have always in the past because I can't qualify for capital for that, those types. So that's a, that's a challenge, I think, for all of us. We can, those mid-level piece of equipment, so.
Okay. Another question. We'll call the motion to vote. All those in favor?
Thank you. We'll see at Article 34 unless you want to do it now.
Yeah, I was just going to say, could you think we could do the articles that pertain to police and fire so they're not sitting here through the whole night?
We got to see you.
All right. Well, this, I don't know if there's, I think there's just the two of them. Here's the fire, the police. Basically, Article five is that the transfer funds to the sum of $37,500 to the police to purchase of seven mobile data terminals to, that will be mounted into police cruisers. And so do we, you know, our chief is here, Mr. Stocks, if you want to.
Chief Dearborn, did you say Article 34?
Twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four.
Why don't you do twenty-four then?
Yeah.
No, the ambulance is fine, right. Yeah, why don't we take that up while Chief Dearborn's out?
Okay.
Should I brought a prompt?
Well, hold on. Article 34.
That's what, that's what $37,000 gets you.
So that's all?
Yeah, that's it. It does a whole lot though, Mark.
You got to demonstrate?
Yeah, I'm always looking for it. So this is cardiac monitor. Does EKGs, interprets EKGs, do cardiac pacing, blood pressures, action levels, quality respirations. It also has telemetry. We can talk to the hospital, send all the data to the hospital. So it brings a doctor into your living room or records all the information. So this would be the third one for us. We have two fully equipped ALS ambulances now. We don't have a spare and the third ambulance does not have one of these. So this would increase your capability. What we found is in the, back in the day, they were available to borrow for all the people we had when break, which is simply not the case anymore. So. And with the fact that we have three ambulances, we need to have that enhanced capability. So this is really core to our capability. It was, it was intended to be on the fall, I mean, in the spring meeting. I always, this one has, because it has a separate funding source and I take full responsibility, I didn't check the warrant to make sure it was still there when I went to the the meeting. It got dropped off. As you recall, I had a couple other bigger warrant articles on there I was really focused on. So my bad, we missed it. So this is actually the one we ordered. So I have taken the sticker, put a battery in it because that's the day that the warranty starts. So I will wait till, providing you approve it to November 7th, meeting to put the battery in it, so.
Well, thank you for bringing it in to show us. Hopefully we'll never have to get hooked up to one of those. But I know that it makes a huge difference for folks.
I'll move you adopt Article 24.
Okay, 24. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, so we got 24. Now we'll go back to Article, I said six?
Five.
All right. And actually, when we look at the articles, we maybe, I know it's a small amount, but I wonder if we should just put it right next to the Article four. You know.
Makes sense.
Huh?
Yeah.
Makes sense, yeah.
To do all at the same time. So let's, let's plan on that.
Moving 24 to right after four.
Yeah. Well, the current four, but after the first article on the Fire Department. All right. And we have Police Chief Stocks and you're going to tell us about these computers that we need to replace and.
Didn't bring one in?
At least you didn't drive the car in.
I'll learn, I'll learn the hard way. I don't want to water down a compliment that Dan paid Rebecca Townsend by, I couldn't help noticing you didn't introduce me as the best police chief. So the warrant article I have submitted is for seven, we call them MDT, mobile data terminals, basically laptops for our cruisers. As you know, our police cruiser is our office. The current ones we have, they're working, but the standard practice or the industry standard is about three to five years of the shelf life of these computers. I'm sure we can all commiserate that anytime we buy a TV, computer, television, the very next day it's been upgraded out there and what you have is antiquated. So our computers currently are approximately six to seven years of age. They're all pretty harsh work environment even though they're designed to handle that, the heat. They're permanently mounted in the cruisers. But that still has a degradation on its integrity and its capabilities. The batteries are starting to go down. We've had a couple of computers have to get, you know, $400, $600 worth of batteries. And then that takes time from shipping and ordering. And when a computer's down, we take the cruiser out of service. We have a limited fleet, obviously, so anytime a cruiser's down, we're a little bit hurting there. So basically, and it's one of these things that it was kind of brought to my attention the hard way. As we know, the last year and a half or so, we've had some rocky road with the IT department, trying to get that up and running back to speed with the IT director. So I think it fell by the, kind of out of our radar a little bit until, until it was brought to my attention that they're starting to go out of service with a little bit more frequency, which kind of got my attention towards that. Typically, this is an IT kind of purview. But based on the fact that we've kind of gone through some transition the past few months, I kind of took the lead on this. I spoke with Lynn at length about it. She was all for me submitting this, but maybe moving forward in the future now that we get a little bit more stable IT department will probably transition back to them handling this type of kind of allocation. But basically, the only thing, and I hope I don't misinterpret it, or maybe Corinne or Mike can help me out, but I submitted it with, as you see, the green strike through. That's the newest model of what we have. And I, after I submitted it, I realized I probably didn't want to be so finite in the request in case that changes or through bidding process or this and that, we may go with a different vendor, even though that's the one we probably would like to have. I didn't want a warrant article submitted with that specific language. I think Mike said that's okay if we can strike that with what the official wrote.
Okay, so, you know, you have basically a pretty good description of what it was. Yeah?
Chief Stocks, I guess the question is, if we didn't have big-time free cash, how would this have been? Would we have had to wait till the spring or a separate appropriation or? How have these been replaced in the past?
So the current computers that we have, IT purchases those for us, but they include that in their annual or they probably build out their budget. That was a previous IT director. So I think as these reached their shelf life, it happened to be in transition of IT directors. I think it just fell off everyone's purview at this point. Technically, could we wait? I'd hate to say that, but yeah, if you want to wait till the next one. I'd hate to say that, but yeah, if you want to wait till the next one around, we could try. I'm just seeing, based on the frequency of breakdown, I figured I'd move forward the request at this point. There are grants out there that we try to go for, but they're usually competitive grants as well. And if you want to try the roll of dice, we could try that. I just, it's difficult sometimes when other cities and communities are requesting similar things, and the state only has a finite amount of money allocated for this type of grant. Sometimes we may get passed over.
Okay, Josh?
Yeah, and I saw in Lynn's memo about this, that the idea would put this in the capital plan before, or I'm sorry, the IT capital plan going forward, which I think is a good idea. Is there nothing in that budget now? Was that just completely missed for the last five, seven years?
That I'm not sure. Again, we try to build these out with a three to five-year lifespan, so we're at six, seven now, so I'm not sure. I think, the only explanation I give you right now is that I wasn't aware that it had reached the shelf life, and it was just because of that transition with the IT department.
I'm not saying, I meant, has IT, is there some money set aside by IT for this? Was it in their capital plan?
I do not believe so.
Okay. That might, I mean, that's something we might want to check.
Yeah, I could explore that. I don't believe that's the case. I know I've had to purchase a few different things in the past six months. For example, in my dispatch room, we have a roll call every, obviously, three times a shift, three times a day, and we have a huge monitor that has the computer screen up, so that everyone can read the reports and see pictures associated with, you know, the log. That went down on us. I put a request in, they said we can probably order one in a month and a half, two months. I just found some money in my budget to buy it. I can't wait for certain things like that. So I'm really excited about this new IT director kind of getting solid ground, and then me working with that person to find out exactly what the proper way to do this, a lot of these things are, because quite frankly, the past years have been a little bit uncertain.
Just, my final question, is there, are these the kind of things that'll end up in our auction? Or is there any salvage value for them, or are they all worthless when they're?
I don't know, I'm not a computer guy. There's got to be something worthwhile on them. Obviously, I'm concerned with what's on them. Is on that can be cleaned?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, but there might be some value to them, and it's similar to, like anything municipal-based, especially anything public service, law enforcement. It's amazing what the stuff costs, and amazing what the trade-in value is. The emergency lighting of my crew, like lights, you know, when you dismantle a cruiser, you spend a fortune on these lights, but five years down the road, sometimes people buy them, they try to refurbish them, but a lot of times, it's really just scrap. But we can certainly try.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Any other questions? All right, so, and is there anything, Corinne, you would add on this discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article.
Yes, Corinne, is there any?
No, I think that Josh brought up a good point, that was coming onto the IT Department capital plan, which she also alluded to in his speaking, that was the only note that I had for this.
Okay, great. Okay, Mark, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept Article Five on the warrant.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do you want me to, there's one on here, the crossing guard thing, I can.
That's the next one.
All right. So the next article goes into crosswalk and safety school zone and so forth. I guess I would say that perhaps this would be the point, if we took those first two citizen petitions and moved them back to this place mark, and then, because the second citizen petition is actually about crosswalks and safeties, and I don't know if that makes sense to folks. So we'd move one and two, so this would be, so the Article Five would actually be Article Three, and then Four and Five would be the two citizen petitions, and then Article Six would stay the same. I don't know what people think, if that would, I don't think we'd have to put any further back.
Will there be another presentation on the zoning change? So that's what I'm thinking, because that lasts, or two years ago, that took probably, I don't know, 20 minutes or so, then there were five people on each side, I believe.
We could ask Rebecca if they've asked for more time, because I think they would have to.
So are you thinking that you'd want to?
I'm just thinking, yeah, I'm just thinking if they're going to also present, I mean, I think it's fine where it is, you know, if we're going to have it.
Right up front.
Yeah, up front.
One more, one more. Ms. Townsend, let's see.
I wrote to the petitioner to indicate that I had received it, and he responded that he suspects the comment period or the deliberation will be less time-consuming this year than in 2021, anticipates using a overhead projector to show schematics. But, you know, I haven't received any presentation as of yet, and I have not talked with him about the specifics.
So maybe longer than the normal allotment?
Ah, no.
Oh.
No, I don't anticipate a presentation needing more than 10 minutes, but I haven't discussed that with them yet.
Yes, Mark, all.
Yeah, Dan, I think these first three that we talked about are going to go relatively quickly, and given the fact that we've had backups of registration and people not getting in right at seven o'clock, I think it makes sense to wait 15 minutes. I mean, we're talking, we're not talking nine o'clock these will go on, it's probably...
No, I think if it's anywhere in the top 10, I think that's fine.
Yeah, so, you know, Tom, if you want to make these four or five, you know, I think the next two will go quickly also, but since you don't know, I mean...
Well, we have a new four, because of the other fire.
Yeah, this is going to have to be.
This will be five, six.
Five, six. That's fine.
Yeah, that's my item.
It's almost my streets.
So as long as you have it marked there, Mike, that after the...
After the crosswalk or before the crosswalk?
No, before the crosswalk, and after the police request. So fire the police, and then we'll have this, and then we'll go into the crosswalk, which is now Article Six, it will still be Article Six. So, okay, so Article Six, do we agree on it already? Vote on it, or just give the consensus?
We've got to vote on it.
You have to vote on, right?
Huh?
The order, we'll do that next time.
When we approve the warrants, we can move it around till the last.
Yeah, all right, good. Okay, so, so number six is the vote to transfer available funds of $45,250 for the purpose of enhanced crosswalk safety and school zones, and there are 22 crossing guard posts in town, and 17 of those locations identified for, you know, enlarged, double-sided crosswalk signs. And is there anything else we need to? Oh, and personal, you know, handheld with a light on the sign would be great, can't miss. Do we have a motion to?
I have a question about that. Are we solving a problem that needs to be solved, or are we solving a problem that we're creating? I mean, do we have, do we have a problem now with the crossing guards and the signage? That's all I want to know. $42,000.
Yeah, I mean, so there's two answers to that. The first one, I like the idea of more signage, more visibility to double-sided signs. There's a huge cost to it, obviously. I'm always apprehensive to talk this way, because then people misinterpret that and saying, well, Chief Stocks only care about the dollar. What, is there a price on safety? Of course there isn't, but there's a price on everything. We have a very vocal town resident who's been pushing for the double-sided signs. I don't believe he is aware of how much they cost. Lynn's been in touch with them, I've been in touch with them, my staff's been in touch with them. I like the idea of more visibility at crosswalk. I mean, it's foolish not to say otherwise, or not to say that, you know, we don't need it. The handheld stop signs and lighted vests, that's a different kind of angle that's coming at us. I had a couple crossing guards, one primarily is very vocal, and she's received a lot of support from the community. And then recently, East Long Meadow just outfitted their crossing guards with lighted stop signs, lighted vests. That made some social media, like everything that spread like wildfire. I'm all for it, but once again, the huge cost to it. I have, and just so I have it on record here, my crossing guards, to give you guys a sneak peek of what I'm looking to do eventually, is it's turning into a huge, huge resource, use of my resources to manage the crossing guards. I'd love for some assistance from the school department, but right now, it falls all under the school, the Long Meadow Police Department. I currently have 22 crossing posts in town. We have 41 crossing guards, and that entails 32 full-timers, and then nine part-timers like per DM need to fill in. It's a lot of personnel to manage, and I have a sergeant kind of managing it, but being short-staffed as it is, I'm seeing it starting to draw quite a bit. Nevertheless, we're going to get the job done, not to pat myself on the back, or the Long Meadow Police Department on the back, we'll get it done. It's just, I'm finding this, the crossing guard program is turning into a huge, huge initiative and endeavor of ours. That being said, East Long Meadow's able to outfit their crossing guards, but they have eight, eight people total. So it's a lot easier to, A, manage, and quite frankly, the chief over there says it really just kind of runs itself. Ours is a lot of resources, a lot of time, a lot of energy placed into it. I have no problem outfitting my crossing guards with this. Some complained about the heaviness. We tried this a few years back. The lighted stop sign is heavy, because it's got a battery power to it, so some don't like to carry that around, they have to be charged. So there's an additional kind of headache for them if you do. The vests is a no-brainer for me. The vests are $40 each, they got little LEDs in it, they can wear that. I like the idea of outfitting our crossing guards with more visibility. The stop signs, you know, quite frankly, I've toyed with the idea of, you know, do you outfit the ones that are on the heavier-traveled roadways? I don't mean to bore you to tears with this, it's just, this is the thing I've been going through. The most vocal crossing guard I have is on Route Five by Center School. Obviously, it's a very straight shot, heavily traveled roadway. I got a lot of complaints of vehicles maybe not stopping for her there, or either they actually have to wait quite a bit before the car has noticed her. So I thought, okay, let's get her some more visibility out there. But this proposal is to outfit every crossing guard, because I didn't want to outfit one crossing guard and have the other crossing guard saying, well, am I not as important, or is my crossing post not as important as hers? So this is kind of one of those, it's a big ticket, but it is also a step in the future, a step in making our crossing guards safer. I don't think I answered your question, Mark, but that's pretty much everything on the plate I have.
I guess to go to the next portion, since the next logical thing would be, so in two years, we've got to replace them, or three, or, you know, and we don't have the free cash in three years. So is this something we could build into a budget? Is this going to go through capital system? You know, because it's one thing to buy it now, because we've got free cash, it's another thing to replace them.
Right. And again, just to rehash, my crossing guard budget is $177,000. When I tell it to any other community, they nearly fall over. But it's because we have 22 crossing posts, and I'm always getting constant asks for more. Can we get another post here? Can we get another post here? I'm all for it, but trying to staff.
But that's all labor.
That's labor, correct, but labor equals more equipment, too.
Right, but at some point, we've got to buy replacements for these things.
I only have, I built in five spares for those handheld signs, only because truth be known, a lot of these handheld ones that we currently have that are not lighted, they're like 25 bucks, but they leave them in the trunk of the car, they get in the car, and they drive away, and we find them in shattered pieces on the roadway. So I built in a couple extras, so that we do have that for the unforeseen issues. But you're right, Mark, this is going to be a recurring cost, like anything. So I'm, you know, I'm for it, I proposed it, I got a lot of calls for it. But again, it's just yet another kind of drop in the bucket for me, as far as when it comes to the crossing guard thing, the water's eventually going to overfill. I've been asking for assistance with it. It's a lot of moving parts, and this can't be solved in one night, but I'd love to see if maybe the school department can assist, or at least show me, give me some management of the group. Because it, literally, when I say there, it's hours a day are trying to deal with the call-outs, trying to restaff, and I know this is not the venue for this, I'm just kind of giving you guys a little bit of a trailer for what's coming.
So will the location of these, when the, the folks who are going to wear these vests and these have, will the police department decide those, will your traffic group decide where those are?
So I budgeted for every crossing post we have now, we have 22 crossing posts, so I budgeted for all the people that were, all the staff that I have will get a sign and a vest.
Oh, all 22.
So everyone's going to get it, to be uniform.
Oh, everyone's going to get that, okay, all right. All right, good. Well, because it is, because what you were saying before about the busier streets like Route Five, it's, you know, as a sociologist, they found that kids who grow up on busy streets don't get hit by cars. It's the kids who live on these quiet streets that venture into busy streets, they're at the most risk, because they aren't used to having cars, you know, all around them. Josh?
Are we confident in the costs here? Because I know that we got emails saying, oh, this is only a $4,000 job, and it turned into 34.
This with double-sided signs?
Those are the signs, and then, so I assume that's been, has that been vetted by the state, or the contractor, or the DPW, whoever's going to put in the signs?
So I don't want to drag in the DPW, but I know the signs, is there a purview? And I believe Lynn's been in touch with the DPW, and that's the cost, when, because again, there's certain standardization, signs you have to buy, you can't just kind of, you know, it's standardized DOT-type signs. So I think, yeah, that was, I think we were all a little shocked with the number. I know I was, Lynn told me this.
I'm shocked. How much are these stop signs?
So the stop signs are $250 apiece. I budgeted for 37 signs.
Because crossing guard Ed, every day, 30 kids probably go by and high-five it, and I'm just picturing it breaking.
I am, too. I'll be truthful, I think it's costly, but I'd be remiss not to try something. I do want the kids safer, as long as that's the, the takeaway here is I want, everyone wants our kids safer, and our crossing guard safer. It's just, you know, I'm trying it, it's just with our numbers, of course, I got flooded with calls saying, at least Long Meadow do, why can't we do it? I said, yeah, absolutely. I said, they got eight people, it's a lot easier, I can find cash for eight people right now, when you're talking these numbers.
I was going to say, but on the other hand, I ride with my kids a lot. Belclair, the poor crossing guard there, comes out with shadows, and it's just to get cars, and there's traffic with the mobile station there, and that's a tough place, and there's no signs there.
Right.
So she could use all the help she can get, being visible, I think. But I don't, I think it makes sense to outfit different ones with different things, but I mean, I get what you're saying, but that's, it doesn't seem like a one-size-fits-all solution to me.
Something I consider, like I said, the only issue, I mean, I could definitely do that. I just don't know, does that open me up? Now, again, thinking aloud here, does that open me up to say, well, if something does occur in a location, they say, well, why didn't we do something there if you did something over there? That was my only, I'm a little liability conscious, so I thought of that. I also didn't, expected some crossing guards to sit there going, well, did you not value my position as much as that other one over there? Clearly, it's easy to say, well, that one's busier than yours, but all it takes is one incident, and for us to all look foolish. So that's why I opted just to go with the more expensive role, I guess.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, did we, a motion for Article Five? Oh, no, I mean, Six?
Maybe we take it up next time?
Huh?
I want to, I have more questions on it. I'd rather take it up next time.
Okay, all right. So let's move on to Article Seven, which is asking the town to transfer funds of $1,170,000 for the purpose of making Bliss Park rental to workable. And we're looking at including new electrical panels in the filter room, pool drainage, replacement of the pool pump, you know, refurbishment of sand filters and sort of things, and a pool liner, and ADA improvements. So did you want to speak to this, Sean?
Sean Van Dusen, DPW director. I think you covered the majority of it. I do want to say that this is a rush to get this, this design done, ready for the meeting, so I've only had this for two weeks, and I haven't had a follow-up meeting with AECOM about it, but I pretty much wanted to make sure that while the pool is being worked on, we were going to get as much done as we could. A lot of the equipment's antiquated, it's 30, 40 years old. So what didn't want to have happen was open the pool back up, getting the drainage fixed, and then have a pump go down or electrical issue and close the pool right away again. So it's my hope that when this project is done, we will hopefully have a, a pool that lasts a while longer without any, any more delays and any more closures.
And this is the oldest pool in town, right? I mean, it's from the 60s.
Yeah. There's been some upgrades made, but I think the last round was 30, 35, 40 years ago and not everything, but.
And so just one more, so this pool, this, the liner, I mean, will that make a big difference? Or is it pretty?
So there's two options, one for liner and one for painting, I think. But essentially, we just had a leak in the other pool. We put a liner in for over $200,000. So going through the, the project with the engineer, like I said, what I didn't want to have happen is we fix the drainage and they get a leak. Or we fix the drainage, have a pump go or electrical problem. And with the lead time for this stuff, if a pump went or something else happened, you don't know when you're gonna be able to get replacement parts or go back out to bid. So I looked at the project in totality and said, if the town wants to keep this pool open, this is really the stuff that I think should get done. And hopefully, there's enough contingency built in that if there's an unexpected problem occurs during the, the pre bid, we'll have some, some wiggle room to get it fixed.
Any questions? Yes, Josh?
This may be a Lynn question, or maybe Corinne can speak to it. If we, how many lifeguards did we get last year? Would we have been anywhere close to staffing two?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I can only tell you that Barry has raised concerns about being able to staff it.
Yeah. I, I just, I hate to spend.
Josh, I have a comment for this. So this is the In Class, mine instructor. I spoke with Barry on the phone today and as of 2023, we had 14 lifeguards in summer for Greenwood and only two subs. So there's already a challenge with staffing on Greenwood alone.
I mean, the number one thing I hear about is people want Bliss Pool open. I don't know, but it's up there. But yeah, I just, I'm very nervous about spending a million bucks and not having it open or switching off, having two pools that we only have enough staff for one that are switching between the pools. It's a, and this has been a problem, I don't know if it's COVID related or it just came to my head, but it's been a problem for three years. And really, I don't know the solution to that. And I don't know, we'll never be able to compete with the, we've got three private pools in town that can up their wages and it's, it's a difficult thing to think about. I don't know how I'm feeling yet.
Yes, Mark?
I guess before I get into what I was gonna talk to Josh, my comment to you is, but if we don't spend a million one, we will definitely not be able to open that pool. So, you know, it's kind of like spend the money and cross your fingers and hope that you can hire people. Or don't spend the money and don't even try. But, but just as a kind of a, so everybody understands, Sean and I had an email back and forth today about, about this article. And the purpose is that, I read through this and I'm very, very concerned about the third line. It says, in addition of a second pump or backup. You know, I, I worked for 34 years as a chemical engineer at Monsanto. I installed lots and lots of pumping systems. Almost never was an installed pump financially viable. You know, the best we, we ever did was justified having a uninstalled spare. If the system goes down, it's down for maybe a couple of backwash cycles, maybe overnight, and you take the pool up. But, you know, installing a secondary pump, first of all, I assume this is a chlorinated pool. So the pumps have to be PVC because they can't be stainless steel because stainless steel corrodes from chlorine, right? So they're PVC pumps. They're gonna be, you, you know, it's just not gonna last in line. And it's, you know, you got valves and you've seen them. You got a valve between the two and so it's expensive. You need a whole new switch set for an electrical system to. I think that's a great idea when a consultant is designing with somebody else's money. But when it's our money, I think that's, that's not, not a good financial use of our, of our funds. And I know, Sean, you said maybe we should knock it out. I mean, I'm not saying that you insisted on it.
I emailed the engineer, as I said, I haven't had a chance to meet with him. And over the articles and said, hey, let's have a follow up conversation about it. I think the big thing for us is just to make sure there's redundant pump to put in should one go down. And that's not a big deal to have in, in, in stock. And the existing pumps, if we can retrofit them to get them to put on with a bypass or something, we will.
So these pumps are seasonal. They, you know, pumps, a new pump should last five years, six years, seven.
Hopefully longer.
Something like that.
These ones have lasted a lot longer than that.
Right. So, you know, to have, to pay for a whole second pump and valving system and piping system and electrical system is just, and I guess my, my other comment would be is that I understand why we're doing this now, I think. We'd like to get it done for the next summer. And, and the process is basically, pardon me, that we've got $2 million in free cash, burn a hole in our pocket, and we see an opportunity to spend it. But frankly, if this was not money that was available, I would like to think that this would have gone before a capital planning committee. Where the first question they would have asked is, why two pumps? And we would have gone through a, a secondary review of the, of, of the project. And so, you know, I'm concerned, the timing, the way it's been done, the way that we're trying to push this through. But again, I go back to Josh's comment that, you know, we really want to, and we got a lot of people who want this pool open for next summer. And so I think we need to do it. You know, I, at some point, and Lynn kind of asked, I had said, what do we must do versus what do we want to do? We must take care of the filter that back washes to, to the, to the stream, to the creek. That's what we must do. We're replacing the switch gear and we're replacing the, the pump and we're replacing, putting in a lot, because it's smart to do it when it's all done. But we still haven't answered the question of how much must we spend versus how much is it smart for us to spend that we want to spend? And to me, that, that helps people understand that, you know, look, we must spend whatever the amount is and we want to spend that. And because people, a million, $170,000 is a bundle of money which lends people to say, maybe we just close the pool. And I don't want that to happen. I think we spend what we must spend and not, and consider spending what we want to spend.
You wonder what the cost of the new pool was.
$20 million. It's tens of millions of dollars.
So on your point, it's not a big deal to have these bids alter a little bit, to have that, that taken out. I do think it's a good idea to have contingency built in though.
Right, right. I mean, I assume when we bid it, we're gonna bid it differently from the way we're gonna.
Yes. And, and, and to your point about the, the processes, I think that, at least in my first year here, a lot of this has been trying to catch up and get things moving and having creation of a, of a, of a foundation of a capital plan and asset plan so that we can utilize and plan this stuff out and not be surprised by a million dollar repair to a pool. So I think going forward, we're in much different grounding than we were. And it's my hope to not be panicking to get articles on the fall meeting to make sure town doesn't, we have to have them as the town keeps functioning. It's not, not enjoyable for me either. So I look forward to the, the process.
But we're, we're just very lucky that we had, we ended up with $2.2 million in free cash because none of this would have gotten done.
Yeah. Okay, Josh?
At least not this year.
It's okay if the answer is no. Do we have any idea what, how much, taking out the second filter, how much that would drop this estimate?
I, I don't think it's gonna be significant. But I, I have to go through the lines, but it's, it's not, it's not gonna be huge.
It's not gonna be $300,000.
I do, I do want to mention though, I always approach these projects with massive contingency because something happens. So that number is gonna be lower when we actually award bids. I just don't like going in without a big buffer, especially in this bidding environment. And especially considering what happened with the, the truck. As you'll see later on, things are changing rapidly in the bidding environment we have.
Okay. And it's just, Corinne, there were some notes from Lynn about like the savings in terms of the cost of painting a pool. Could you comment on that for us?
I don't know that Lynn gave a number about like the difference between installing the liner versus painting the pool every year, but she did in the memo say that it would save labor. So there's not a financial amount associated with that unless Sean, you know.
I can't say it off the top of my head, but I do have it.
300,000.
The liner is 300,000.
The paint.
As opposed to painting of the pool, yeah, so we'd save on regular maintenance costs. So.
I don't know if I.
There's two different lines. I don't have it in front of me, but there is.
Yeah, so the, the way that I'm interpreting this, the liner itself is $300,000. That's not the difference between labor and the liner.
Okay.
But I, Lynn can confirm that at the next meeting.
I'll follow your interpretation. Thank you. And, and any other, were you gonna say something? No.
I mean, I, yeah, I could jump in quick. I mean, I, I think we all, we all agree that this is a lot of money. I don't think that's, you know, that's, I don't think anyone wants to spend that type of money. But I just know, like personally, I grew up going to Bliss. That's where I learned how to swim. And, you know, we talk a lot about if we remove this field, this playing field, because we might have a, a school that's there. Like five years is a lifetime for a kid growing up in, in Long Meadow to have these opportunities. And, you know, one of the things when, when I ran was I want to try to protect green spaces, activities that, that kids have and have access to. And these are two gems that we have in our town. And I don't want to spend that money, but I also don't want to turn away a kid and their family from having access to swimming. So, so again, I, I support it. I think we need to focus more on the lifeguard situation. How can we bring lifeguards to these pools? And that's something we should work with the Parks and Rec director on. Because if we're gonna pay, I'm just spitballing, $5,000 extra dollars a year to allow good paying jobs for teenagers to, you know, work and lifeguard these pools, we should be looking into that. So I think that's kind of the problem we need to address. But I, it pains me to think that, you know, maybe we're not gonna have the swimming pool. I mean, we've been waiting for this. And I just think it takes out too many opportunities away from our, our youth and families that don't have access to going to the field club or the country club or, like both country clubs rather. So I'd like to see it come up for a vote for the town and let the townspeople vote on this. So that's my opinion.
Yeah. But I think you're right about having the guards available. And, you know, we probably have to see if we can get Parks and Rec to, to run their own lifeguard course, maybe a couple of lifeguard courses, you know, in the high school swimming pool in the winter so we're prepared. Because you're right, we could come up short. I, you know, I talked to one lifeguard who lived in town and he was lifeguarding in Agawam. So, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I, Dan, I agree with you. I, I, I never, I didn't mean to give the impression I didn't want us to accept this. I want, I want the town to vote.
It's not, yeah, I'm not saying against to you. I'm just saying, generally speaking, I just think.
I, I think the town, this is important to a lot of people. I just want everyone to have the facts and I think we should bring it to vote so we can have, so we can hear. But on the lifeguard thing, they, and this has been a problem for three years. This was before you were on the board. The Parks and Rec has been trying, they've been trying a lot of stuff and they just can't get the people. And it's, it's, it's really frustrating. And I, I wish there was a, an easy solution. I don't know what it is.
Well, our CFO.
So Barry had talked to me today that in the, in the winter, Long Meadow will now be offering a lifeguard certification program. So in the past, North Hampton, East Long Meadow, Parks and Rec have both offered this course. And Barry has been able to coordinate this so that going forward, the in-class portion will be at home online. So it takes away a lot of the timing involved. And the in-skill portion where you're going to the pool and doing the training, that will be in person. But that saves a lot of the time that's involved with making sure that the lifeguards are certified quickly. So she's hoping that in the future, that will lead to more lifeguards being available. But at this point, that's what she has as an option.
Yeah. Well, that's great. That's great news because, you know, kids, you know, get with that training could work anywhere. I mean, we have, like we say, probably five other pools in town with the yacht club and everything else.
Dan, why don't you and I commit to do lifeguarding some?
We'll have a rotation with the board.
I just have a question, I guess, for you. If the town were to approve a sum of money and the, and the, and this is a transfer from available funds and, and we spend less than that sum of money, where does the unspent money go? Back to free cash? Does it stay as a, in that fund? Is, you know, I'm trying to get an idea of really, is it really costs us anything to over appropriate? Because it costs us big when we under appropriate.
Given this is coming out of available funds, it would go back into free cash. Once the project was done, we would close out any residual balance. If it was a bond issue, it would stay in the bond issue and have to be re-appropriated. But coming out of free cash, it would go back into free cash upon completion.
Thanks.
Okay. So that's Article 6 or Article 7 and what?
I'll move that we enter Article, we, we didn't vote on it, right?
No, we didn't have a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that we, now I'm all unnumbering. I'm moving that we accept Article 7 as presented.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Article 8, similar thing, Greenwood Pool Improvement. The good news is the price tag is quite a bit lower. We want to use $220,000 to make repairs to Greenwood Park Pool. And Sean, do you have any comments on that?
It's similar to the other one, only a little bit lower in price tag, which is still high. But there also is gonna be some, some work done on the drainage underneath the, the sort of left side of the pool deck. It's all clay and water and we keep having it buckle. We had to make emergency repairs this spring. So part of this, this project will be to, to put in some, some pipe to get the water to drain a little bit better. If we don't do it, we'll be fixing that deck over and over again, pretty much every other year.
Okay. Yes.
Sean, I'm just trying to remember from last year, we, we did a liner and a cover for Greenwood?
Believe so.
Well, Bliss have a cover?
I don't know about the, I know it's got a, I know we included it. It probably does that, that number, but I have to look through the lines.
Because if you line it, then you gotta keep watering it.
I think the lines show it, yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, so.
Yeah.
All right. So any other questions? Yes.
I'm, I'm not looking for the answer to this, but I'm sure town meeting will look for the answer to this is, how much more money are we gonna put into Greenwood every year? I mean, like Josh said, we, we spent $300,000, I think, last town meeting and now with another 200, you know, he's.
There was emergency work there, it was more. So I, I think I spent 20 or 30,000 to get that fixed.
You know, this goes back to, and frankly, I think it's worth us telling people in town, these pools are 30 years old. Yes, we're spending money this year, but in the last 30 years, we spent 15 bucks or what, you know? And, and it's, it's an accumulation of not having spent anything on some of those pools. And I, you know, both, both the rentals pool as well as the Greenwood pool. But I, I think it may be worth noting that because these are big tickets.
And I want to follow up.
Over 40 years, it's not that much.
On that note, the, there is, we are grinding pieces of this deck that, to make it functional, not to have tripping hazards, but within seven or eight years, there's gonna be other portions that will need to be replaced. It won't be astronomical money, but it will have to appear in a capital. So there is gonna be continuing work on this pool needed.
Okay. And a lot of that is just because of wear and tear.
It's just frost and old concrete and stuff moves and so.
Yes.
Mark, if it's helpful, I'm looking at the capital assets, which tracks our fixed assets over the lifetime of all the assets that we have in the town. In the last 10 years alone, we've spent $109,000 on Bliss and an additional $235,000 on Greenwood on top of what you talked about.
75 of Bliss was that study. So it's. Yeah, that's most of, not, not much. I think that's all from last year. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments about Greenwood Pool?
I move that we accept Article 8 as presented.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Article 9, transfer from available funds, $200,000 to, for the purchase of increasing the fiscal year 2024 operating budget for traffic streetlight account. So we converted our streetlights into LEDs in 2020. And so now, just want to explain this.
Did you want to do this one, Paul?
I'll be glad to explain.
Okay.
Because I was the, the reason, I helped do this. Okay. So we switched our streetlights to LEDs, okay? Unfortunately though, we still had a, a deal, a power purchase agreement that said we purchased power for our streetlights, okay, for other accounts. And so those bills kept coming in and we in fact were paying them out of the DPW line item. But they, the money was actually just going into credits. We have now been able to transfer those credits to other accounts, which took a long time to do. It took a while. do, it took a while. But nevertheless, the DPW was, the DPW line item was paying out money, not for our streetlights, but wherever those are going, it could be the schools, it could have been non-streetlights, whatever it was. I mean, the town incurred those costs for electrical bills. And so because of that, when the budget was prepared, we said, oh, we don't need money in the streetlight line item because we went to LEDs. But when the bills came in.
Someone had to pay them.
They got paid out of a line item where we didn't have enough money. So what this is looking to do is transfer money into that line item so we can cover the bills we paid for other lighting, not necessarily the streetlights, but it just happened to be the streetlight line item. Paul, how did I?
It's fine, just, I'll just make a couple of comments. You know, this very same issue came up in July for FY '23, you may recall.
Right.
We had to transfer money. We are working on to get to Schedule Z to, instead of the streetlight account fully paying for the credits, that we would find where the allocations are being properly going to and start charging those other accounts. I, I just don't have that Schedule Z yet to know where those other accounts that are being impacted, but at some point in time, there will be a changeover and the DPW won't get fully charged once we can get a hand on that Schedule Z.
So, but it's fair to say that somebody else in town is getting a real break on their electric bill, right? Because the DPW's streetlight line has been paying for somebody else's lighting. But that's going to be sorted out by whoever, right?
And will you be able to reconcile the differences, like from the past?
Well, we, we would only be able to go back to July 1st at this point in time.
Okay.
We wouldn't be able to go beyond that. But we could get into the, you know, I know, I believe anyway, that the library is a beneficiary. So that we would then charge the library a fair share of, of the, you know, anything from July 1st to whenever we reconcile and put that back into the account that the lighting account paid for.
Okay. Because they had, in their budget, they budget for electricity, so.
They budget for electricity at, at full. But in the future, once all this gets settled, you should see that line item come down and, and you should be able to see this, well, actually, yeah, you would see that line item because they're getting the benefit and also see this line item coming down because they will no longer pay for the full amount of all the credits.
Okay, good. Any other questions on this? Okay.
Clear.
So you'd make a motion, Mark?
We approve Article nine.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay. Article 10, the town will vote to transfer available funds of $86,000 for the purpose of increasing the fiscal operating budget for sanitation, recycling, disposal fees. So do you want to, so, I know we used to make money.
There's a little explanation there, but essentially sometimes we get a credit when we turn our recycling in and the market fluctuates, sometimes it costs us money. And so I don't think we have enough to cover the operating budget because we're paying right now.
Okay. And do you have any idea about projections for light plastic or if it's going to get any money? No way.
No, no arbitrage on that.
Yes, Josh.
Ian, do you have any idea how much we've made on recycling the last few years?
No, no, it's not my head. No, I can get that for you though.
We had some other stuff, I was wondering.
All right. So we have to.
Yeah, if you could, that could be interesting to put it up against.
All right.
The, the thing is though, Joshua, even in its worst case, when we paid for recycling, we pay a much lower fee than as trash. So the difference is still a savings to the town.
There's some work through it, even if it's not as much as other years.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion for Article 10?
I'll move, we approve Article 10.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Article 11, transfer of funds of $647,000 for the purpose of purchasing two new trucks for the DPW. And these trucks that are being replaced are from 2002 and 2003. They're supposed to last 10 to 12 years, so we've gotten 20 years out of them. That's not bad, but.
Yeah.
You have to replace them.
So part of the kind of resetting the asset management has been looking at the fleet and the fleet replacement schedule. And I think there's been some inconsistencies in, in when the DPW has asked for trucks. So a few of the trucks have gone far longer than they should have without appearing on a capital plan. These are two of them and they're sort of our, our major fleet fighters. They're big trucks and they're really used for the mains and especially during heavy storms. So they're essential to the storm removal operations and they're in bad, bad shape. I think they were, the shape of them was exacerbated by the amount of magnesium chloride we've been using historically as well as being stored outside at the previous garage. It is my hope that with new trucks and the new facility we have, that we'll get some, some good life out of them, having that, that car wash bay, which is unusual. But these are essential and they're in, they're in bad shape and they're not the only ones like that. So I'm trying to come up with a way to stagger the replacements so that we're not asking for a pile of trucks all at once. But our fleet is in, in need of some attention.
All right. So your, your sense is that these trucks, right from the beginning, we're going to be able to maintain them properly because of the new, we could wash the carriage down and get the salt off them and, and they, you know, so who knows, maybe they're 30 years, I don't.
And adding, adding on, just for aside, the, getting parts when these trucks break is incredibly difficult now and they're costly. So there is a point, point when you have a truck and you've maintained it properly that you need to trade it in to get as much values you can out of it back to the town to buy another one. These trucks are worthless now. We're just going to struggle to keep them on the road much longer, but they are used and they are an important part of the fleet. So, yeah.
All right. Mark, all.
Couple of questions. Sean, first, what's the gross weight of these? I remember we went from one-ton trucks and two-ton trucks and then somebody said the one-ton trucks couldn't make it up the hills. When, that was on capital planning, they tried to cheap out and ended up, do you?
These are like 40,000 or 50,000. They're, they're big. They're the huge fleet. They're like the tractor-trailer truck.
The second thing is, if, if we, I'm going back, if we didn't have money in the, in free cash, the process would have been, we take this to capital planning. And when capital planning looks at trucks, any trucks at the DPW, the first thing they'd say is 50% from capital, 25% from the water retained earnings, 25% from sewer retained earnings, because these trucks get used by those departments. Why aren't we doing the same thing here?
You're absolutely right, we should. That's an oversight on, on my part.
I, I'd like to suggest that we ask this to be revised, just to show 25% from water retained, 25% from sewer. And, I mean, I get it, 2002, let's replace the darn things, but.
Yeah.
But I think that that's the.
You're correct. That, that is the correct, the right allocation and I missed that.
Okay. So you just want to change the description, Mark?
No, what we're going to do is, it's actually going to be three articles, I think.
No, no, we'll have three different sources, that's all, in one article.
The source would be, it would be 323,500 from available funds and then 170 something thousand dollars from water retained earnings and the same one from sewer retained earnings.
Okay. I mean, is that, very straightforward?
It, that's kind of been our historical process of 50, 25, 25, paying for these things.
All right.
So we keep the old guys on the board.
So it's, it's still a transfer, the same amount, it's just where it's going to come from. Okay. Are we going to have a motion for number 11?
I'd rather wait, get this re, we've got another one we're going to do.
Okay, we'll hold on that one, Mike. And we'll move to number 12, to transfer funds the amount of $10,000 for the purpose of purchasing permitting software for the town clerk office. So we, we issue a lot of permits and so this, this will help us out. And someone want to speak to this motion?
I'll just add that Lynn and the town, the town manager and the town clerk had gone back and forth on this quite a bit and, you know, wondering if it made more sense just to build it into the annual budget before bringing it into fall town meeting. And with Lynn's blessing, they ultimately ended up bringing, adding it to this warrant and that, that was for the purpose of getting ahead of the dog licensing season. So that, that's the only reason on timing here. And as Lynn says in her memo, the idea would be that annually it would be built into the fiscal year budget.
Okay. And so, just a question though. And so this software, would this sort of give people reminders, like the, probably the most annual purchases are dog licenses, right? I mean, for folks and with this, you know, remind them the licenses do?
I believe this is an internal software, but Mike.
And it's, and it's a permitting software for the dog licenses. Currently there is none for that.
But it's not the, the license, the owner of the dog does not interface with this software, correct? It's the town clerk that interfaces with it?
The town clerk's office, correct. And then not used for bill pay, but we would have to look into that specifically because I'm not sure the other capabilities that it has, system.
Okay. So it's going to streamline the process as far as for people paying and getting these things organized, but.
I don't know if it will help people pay. I don't know if it will. It, it will help the town clerk's office for sure and we're not sure about the customer service end of that. If it would change anything on the website or anything like that, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Josh?
As we discussed for last meeting, this is all done on the, on the census anyway. So I don't, I wonder if there's any interface to us. My question is, is this, is it $10,000 a year? Or do we, are we buying the purchase and then there's an annual support?
Right, yes. There's a, a licensing fee also for a year?
I didn't think to ask that question. My, my, the way that I had interpreted this was that it was 10,000 a year, but now that you're saying that, I actually don't know. That might be the first time cost. So we can check in on that.
Good point, Josh.
It says purchasing permitting software.
The, the last line says moving forward, the annual support cost will be built.
Indicating that would be different, probably. Yeah.
Yeah, it could be 10 grand a year, it could be 10 grand now and a thousand bucks a year. I think we're finding out.
Well, the IT department could probably tell us about, if there's licensing and we have to maintain.
I'll give you an example, even like when we went through with the app, it was obviously an install fee and then it's different annual maintenance every year. So it's probably something similar to that, but I don't think we have that, that number on hand right now. So we could definitely look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I also, we want to find out if it's 10,000 and if we don't pay next year, does it not work? So that's, I think that's important information for us.
Okay. So if you guys can look into that and then get back to us for Article 12. Any other questions? All right. Article 13 is to accept mass general law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, which allows the dedication without further appropriation of a percentage of no less than 25% particular fees. And so there's a whole lot of stuff going on. But we joined a class action lawsuit against a major opioid drug manufacturers. And it was resolved and there was money distributed. And so this, a vote on this article basically allows us to dedicate this into a stabilization fund, right?
This is our third one. So we got a big payout. I think we just, we're getting the money, but we have to move it into the fund.
Right, a stabilization fund is a special action.
Paying the general rule, any money coming in from the town, it goes into the general fund. So what we're saying here is that this particular money, if accepted by the town, 100% of it will go into this stabilization fund for, for the opioid settlement. It'll have to be re-appropriated once it's in there. But again, general rule goes into the general fund. We're just trying to divert it into an operational stabilization fund to use specifically for the class action suit requirements.
And this is what we hear from Finn every year.
Right. And this is something I've been talking about quite a bit because I, I really think that money needs to be protected and not just end up in free cash because of how it came to the town, basically.
Well, legally can't.
Huh?
Legally can't be used unless it's, you know, is focused on mitigating the effects of, you know, opioid.
Right, there's certain restrictions, but, you know, this will make sure that the money doesn't get, there's no leakage, I guess, so to speak. Yes, Mark.
Tom, to Rebecca's comments earlier, it seems to me it makes sense that 13, 14, 15 get put together in a consent agenda. They all deal with the opioid.
Yeah.
Abatement fund. One creates the fund, you know, puts the money in it, one's got the, you know, helps us establish the fund correctly. So I, I think they make a lot of sense to put these together and knock them all off because we're just going to explain the same thing three times.
I agree.
And frankly, I don't think we're going to have to explain it at all.
All right. So do other people think that's a good idea?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah. I can't remember, can we do a narrative on this, on the consent, saying these, all three of these, oh, that's right.
Yep, we put that. And, and we usually move the motions as written. But, all right. So, and that would bring us up to Article 16. Like 10 more to go, I think.
Wait, should we vote on that?
Did you guys say vote on that?
Oh, vote on this, yeah, being in the warrant as a, as a consensus agenda.
I'll move that we adopt Articles 13, 14, 15 and put them as a consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, great. So Article 16, to see if the town could transfer from the sewer retained earnings account the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of repair work on the sewer force main. And so, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. So we had a sanitary sewer overflow this summer on the, when the manholes, it's a pressure relief valve, an air relief valve. And the manholes on the main that goes from our pump station to Springfield. So we're going to have to engineer a bypass or something else in order to replace that manhole and fix that, that air relief valve. It's kind of an emergency, but not like, it's going okay. So that's what it's for, is to get the manhole repaired, to fix the air relief valve and to keep the sewer flowing to Springfield.
Okay. Any questions?
You sure it's not an emergency?
It's been stressful, but it worked.
All right. Do you motion to accept Article 16?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Article 17, transfer the amount for the sewer retained earning of $80,000 for the purpose of purchasing a new jet truck. And as you know, we already appropriated money for that, but the quotes came in a little higher, right?
Right. So then between the time we got the quotes and got through our spring meeting, the price is $150,000. So I'm asking for $80,000 in hopes that by the time we get this a lot of money, we can actually sign the contract.
You sure you didn't add any special hubcaps or anything?
Yeah. It's, it's pretty fancy, yeah.
And what would be delivery on this?
All these vehicles are over a year away, by the way, I should say. So this might be a year and a half before we're actually able to get it. That's the lead time in building these trucks now.
But this will fix the price.
We'll be able to get this in a contract and start, start the process of building it because it has to be specially built for us.
Okay. Any other questions on the extra money for that jet truck? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move we accept Article 17.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Article 18, will authorize the town to borrow the sum of $1,465,000 for the purpose of sewer main improvement in preparation for this L project, which is going to be repaving and repairing the roads in the older section of town, which is, we're going to approve the sewer mains all along Long Meadow Street, Forest Glen Road, Converse, Lawwellan and Laurel Street. And this is a big ticket item. I don't know if you have any.
I'm sure this is, this was part of the presentation you guys heard two weeks ago. And the sewer, sewer mains in the section of town have significant I and I, that's inflow infiltration. They're like Swiss cheese, they're collapsing in spots. So substantial amounts of the mains will be slip lined, which is a technology used where we don't have to dig up the line. But some portions are at a, at a place where we'll have to replace them fully. So this is to spend the money to get the sewer lines upgraded in front of the $10 million L project that's coming along from the state. That tipped money.
Now, is this area of town costs us a lot of money in terms of sewer problems? I mean.
So you're going to get a presentation next meeting about the places we're having the most metal water main breaks. The sewer main is, the sewer mains are the next capital thing we're working on. I do have the map started where our most inflow infiltration is. So we do have those hotspots sort of marked, but they're not in our GIS yet. But this was one we, we cambered and TV'd and we see indeed we, we need to do the work.
Okay. Thanks. Ian, Mark, all.
Yeah, I, I think there's a disconnect here because it's for the purpose of sewer main improvements, but we're taking the money out of the water system and.
We changed, it was a typo, we changed it earlier.
Oh, okay.
We just changed it late afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to get it.
Okay, so we are.
Yep.
Inconsistent there.
It should state now sewer system charges rather than water system charges.
And in terms of borrowing now, what, what kind of percentage rate are we looking at?
We have, kind of have quotes for 20, 25 and 30 year, what AA is selling at. We're at AA plus, so we might do a little bit better. But according to the financial advisor, 20 year is selling at 3.95%, plus or minus 10 basis points. But that would be 4.05 or 3.85. 25 year is 4.15, plus or minus 15 basis points. And then the 30 year, it's 4.3% plus or minus 20 basis points. Certainly I would like to keep these, I work with Ian and we'll, we'll look at the current debt service that we have. I'd like to keep the sewer minimally at, at, at 20 years, something will be less. But once we get to the larger one on the water, that's going to be a little bit more problematic. But once we get to the larger one on the water, that's going to be a little bit more problematic and costly to your rates. Yeah.
Okay, Mark Gold.
Yeah, just, the, the question I have here, Sean, is the, the timing of this appropriation, the timing of the project relative to the project. You know, we're looking to appropriate this now in the fall. And, and this is borrowing, so it's not got anything to do with free cash or anything. You know, why, given the fact that this project is 2026?
So the schedule is actually a year and a half away, I believe, which means that we have just enough time to get up to bid and start this project, which will last a full year in front of the tip. And we can't be in conflict because we can't have two contractors in the same job. So that's, that's why it was a rush to get the engineering done and to get it bid. And that's why it's here and rather than at the spring meeting, it was because we need to start in the spring. It's also much more advantageous from a bidding perspective to bid a project like this out right now and start the work in the spring because the contractors will fill in their, their work with us and give us a cheap rate and use that as a base to sort of get other work and bid higher. So it's my hope that we'll do pretty well, although the rates are higher, I think we'll do really well on the actual cost itself, construction.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? All right, so are we ready to put this one on, 18? Do we have a motion?
I'm moving that we accept Articles 18 and 19 as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. No further discussion, all those in favor?
18 and 19, Josh.
So, and now we look at Article 20 and for OPEB Stabilization Fund. And do we have a magic number for this?
It's, it's all going to depend, I mean, at, you know, prior to the start of this meeting, you were below the $500,000, kind of with all the expenditures that you had for free cash. And, and your norm of policy was anything above $500,000 would go, I'm taking both the operational stabilization one and the OPEB one. But you didn't have enough money to put in there, unless you want to really draw that free cash balance down. You know, prior to this meeting, the free cash balance, it was dropping to about $288,000. With the change that you just made for the trucks, it's going to go up to $611,000. So at this point, under, if you want, there'd be $111,000 that would go into the Operational Stabilization Fund, which is really not enough to put into the OPEB. And that would bring you to your policy of leaving $500,000 after the fall town meeting to address anything that comes up in the spring.
Okay.
You know, if there's any other changes, obviously we have to, we kind of put this in as a placeholder. If you did make moves with, with what you had accepted or anything like that at this meeting, you kind of put it on there just to be aware, but it was kind of a moving target.
But do we usually appropriate the OPEB funds on our main budget in the spring?
Yes, you have, you have, and, and the FY '24 budget does contain, according to your policy, the exact number according to your policy. So we already have that number built into the FY '24 budget for the OPEB. And I believe it's like $680,000 built into the operating budget.
All right, so this would be supplemental?
If there, if there was any money available, it would be supplemental, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, so.
So the likelihood is the OPEB from, from available funds, Article 20 is, that's when it's going to disappear. And a small amount of money for 21 going into the Operational Stabilization Fund will be proposed. You know, right now it's like $111,000.
Okay, so we, so one of these articles could disappear, but.
Yeah, right now it's like 20 is going to disappear.
20 is probably disappearing, and 21 could be 111.
Correct.
Okay. So we want to, yeah.
Yeah, Tom, I just, Paul, as long as you're having this discussion, I guess the question is, you know, I always get, why are we going to put $111,000 in the Operating Stabilization Fund? We've already hit the target for the Operating Stabilization Fund that we, that we set. If I'm reading.
Yeah, yeah, you heard exactly correctly. Mark, do you anything else to say? It's, that's how your policy is set up, if you want to not go through with your policy? That's your choice?
The policy also says we're going to have a operating stabilization target of seven and a half percent of our budget. We're way over that now, so.
So do you want to break one or two? That's all.
Well, right, we can. Personally, money that goes in the Operating Stabilization Fund is money that you never see again and can never use again, in my humble opinion. And I know people don't like that, but, you know, I, I don't buy into the fact that a healthy operating stabilization fund gives us lower bond ratings. Doesn't seem to have done that before, but then again, we don't have an unhealthy.
No.
I'd rather see the money go into OPEB than, which we know we need money into, than go into the Operating Stabilization Fund. I guess that's my plea to the select board is, the operating stabiliz, and Paul, you probably know better than I do, the Operating Stabilization Fund.
It, it is over, it is over the policy threshold.
Right, so I put more in there. I mean, the only time, am I, the only time I recall us ever taking money out of the Operating Stabilization Fund was the 2011 October storm when we needed, desperately needed money for cleaning up the.
There was one time we had to take it out for operations for snow and ice removal, maybe about seven, eight, nine years ago.
Okay.
But that was the only other time.
What would the number be to get us down to 10%? What's the difference between, what we, what we have there?
To, to get the Operational Stabilization done down to 10%?
Yeah.
I think right now, just the Operational Stabilization Fund, if I recall correctly, is like 11%?
11.25, seven basis.
11.25.
Yeah.
You know, probably 100 and some odd thousand, 200,000, I'd have to look at it exactly. You know, what, I think like 1% is going to be almost $90,000, so maybe 135,000.
And, and Paul, as far as the OPEB, was it the year before last that we didn't? Or there's, we had a short year, we had a short year recently, right?
There was one year where the operating budget did not meet your policy.
Okay.
But subsequently during the fiscal year, it was taken out of free cash in the fall to fully meet your policy plus.
Oh, okay.
It just wasn't within the operating budget.
Right. So if we, as, as Mark suggests, if we put this 111,000 now in OPEB, does that give us a cushion during the year or not for?
Does it give you a cushion? I mean, you can call it what you want, I guess. I mean, yes, you're overfunding in FY '24. And if you want to then use it as a cushion to offset it against some FY '25, if the operating gets really tight, certainly you could, you know, make that statement that you overfunded in '24 because FY '25 operationally, you know, if things may get tight if the state doesn't, you know, keep its funding going like it has been in the past.
All right, so for newer members of the board, for the OPEB is, is again, the money we, we need to spend for retirees. And we, you know, every town is way, way behind. And we've made a movement to try to catch up. And so I, I guess I agree with Mark, that would make sense to put some money into OPEB at this point in time. And then, you know, we'll see how it goes, you know, in 2024 budget.
Tom, if I could, I, just so, the OPEB fund is woefully underfunded, as you can imagine, you probably heard. But the sooner we get that funded, we put away, how many millions of dollars a year toward OPEB expenses?
Well.
There, in two, in two categories, we put in current employees, but also we retirees.
For, for retirees.
That's the number.
We currently, we budget for retirees about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars to cover their, the town share of their health insurance.
So, so if we were at a level that we, that was appropriate, we could, could start working down that.
Right, that number would be dropping.
On our operating budget. So it's, this is significant, significant value down the road, us funding OPEB as soon as we can.
And that OPEB liability still is at 28 million, somewhere in that vicinity, it's still a large amount of money.
But, but at some point, Paul, my hope, before I leave here, is that we start drawing a little bit out of it. Even though we can't fund 100%, you know, right now it was initially so low that it didn't make sense to draw out the.
Right.
4% or 5% or whatever it is. But, but if we're up, if we get up around 10, 12, 15 million dollars, yes, we haven't fully funded it, but to draw, draw down some of the interest to help our operating budget may make sense. I'm not suggesting, but it may make sense.
But Mark, it sounds like you can hang around for a long time because we're only at about 7 million bucks.
$10 million in a few years.
Well, you know, it, it depending on the market too.
Right.
So if that starts turning around, that'll be very helpful.
Right, yes, so invested money could make a difference on the market, Josh.
Yeah, given that we're at our, well above our 10% goal for the stabilization fund, I'm, I'm on board with Mark. We want to put some extra in the OPEB.
All right.
Yeah, I, I agree. So this would mean then we're striking Article 21, keeping Article 20?
Okay, we would keep Article 20 and he'd give us a number.
Yeah, I would assume it's the level over 500,000.
Right, yeah.
Got that.
Okay. So, all right, so we'll scratch Article 21. And then do we want to just wait until he comes with the final number and vote on it next time? Or do you want to? Yeah, we'll put it in.
Might as well have a number.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then we have Article 22, which is a transfer of $370,318.06 to the town's Special Revenue Fund for Long Meadow Community TV and the Long Meadow PEG Access Cable Related Fund created by the voted town meeting in May 9th of 2023.
Tom, can I suggest that 23 and 20, 22 and 23 also be taken together?
Mm-hmm, sure, okay. So I don't know, we have any, Corinne, do you have any comments on these articles, 22 and 23?
I don't.
Again, our, what happened in May.
Yeah, right.
What happened in May is we created this Peg Access Cable Related Fund to be effective July 1st.
Okay.
Prior to that, in FY '22 and FY '23, we, we got in $370,000. So we're trying, so, and, and that's been held in a different account. So we're trying to take the 370 and put it into the correct fund that we started, or that we voted on in May. Since that time, in FY '24, we've, we've, I think there's another $79,000 that came in in FY '24. So that, that becomes the total of the $449,000. We're appropriating that so that we can then give it to LCTV or a portion of it. We don't have to give it all to them, we're just making the appropriation. I don't know if that cable TV agreement is signed, but they still need operational funds that we would be distributing to LCTV during FY '24.
It is not signed, we're two red lines away. This is before I was chair, it's now after I was chair, and it's still sticking with us.
Can't leave till it's done.
But we can't, we can't pay without a contract, so this is.
This is only setting up the appropriation, we don't have to make any payment.
And, and the payment will actually happen through the department, it'll happen through Lynn approving it. And, but we're, we're very close, thank you to Attorney Kellerman, who's been a huge help on this. But, so this is, this should have been done, I don't know, 25 years ago? The fund, creating the fund, and now we have to start appropriating. The fund was absolutely necessary, this is necessary too, because this is again, it's in our general fund, we got to put it in there, which is what it's, where it's supposed to be. And then we can start paying it out and hopefully never think about it again.
Okay, so everyone has a sense that we're putting money in this fund, and then later we'll have a system, once there's an agreement, that we can begin to help them pay the expenses so we don't go off the air.
So I, I will move that we accept Article 22 and Article 23 as a consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. So we already talked about Article 24 and we moved it earlier in the order. And so then we look at Article 25, which is to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,912 to increase the operating budget for planning and community development. The Building Department, Planning and Community Development Coordinator, Safety. So basically, this is to fund a hiring of a 130-hour a week position that would be working with, you know, three separate part-time positions. Or, or replacing three separate part-time, so maybe you want to speak to this, Corinne?
Yeah, because.
Positions, yes, yes. So the way that the staffing situation stands right now, is that those positions are empty, three positions are empty. They were previously filled by the same person, which was not a requirement, but she was asked to take on those roles and accepted over time. We had, the town manager and I had already started to discuss the need to reformat that position when she gave her notice. So now we have this opportunity to, all those positions are vacant, to fill with just one person, prescribe all the roles in a way where it's that this staff person will be making the same wage for all of the work. And they will additionally have space in our Planning and Community Development Building Department office and provide some additional support there as well. But it's, it's essentially reformatting and more formalizing some of those duties that she had taken on that were not actually part of her job descriptions and she was doing out of altruism essentially.
Okay, so she'll cover a lot of territory with according to the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission.
It's all under the Community Development umbrella, so the, it's essentially helping stakeholders, you know, residents or, or businesses, property owners with land use related permitting. And then providing the meeting recording.
Okay. Any questions on this position, Mark?
Yeah.
So this also eliminates the need to create a special town employee because they're working multiple departments?
Oh, I see, yeah.
Right.
I'll move that we accept Article 25 for the.
Second.
Okay.
I had one more question, is that salary for the year? Or is that December through the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, so that's assuming that we could hire someone on or around December 1st and keep them retained until June 30th. The, their full salary, depending on the rate that they're hired at, would be built in for the next fiscal year. And this number is reflective of the highest step that we would hire someone at for the way this position graded out to. And then we've reduced the remaining salary that is left in the three line items for the positions that Bianca held. So it's, it, this number itself is not reflective of what the position would actually be earning or anything. Yeah.
Okay, good. No other questions? We'll take it to a vote, all those in favor? All right. And now we have a, a bond interest appropriation?
If you want to hear about it, it can be removed, but if you want to hear about it, I can give you the reason why I put it in there.
So it's, you don't think it's going to happen? It's going to be removed?
You may recall back in May, we took out a six-month ban. There were a number of appropriations that were made in prior years. We set it up for six months with, with the anticipation that we would be bonding these in May of 2023. And if we bonded in May of 2023, historically, there's a semi-annual interest payment. That interest payment would have been due in, if we bonded in November of '23, six-month interest payment would have been due in May of '24, FY '24. We would have had to make the appropriation for that first six-month worth of interest.
Okay.
We've been working with, with the financial advisor, you know, Erica and Ian. We're probably going to postpone the ban until Janu, I'm sorry, the bond until January, thereby not having the first six-month interest payment until July of 2024, or FY '25.
Oh, okay. Good. So, all right. Article 27, the vote to raise and appropriate $183,000, $600 for the, from the fiscal year 2024, community preservation revenues and CPA fund balance reserves for open space and reserves for community house and so forth. So this is going to look for, to cover the appropriation, or the CPA revenue from acquisition initiatives. Do you want to speak to these?
Tom, this just puts the money that we were raising into the buckets, right?
Right, by statute, we have to put in 10% every year into those three special buckets. This is taking care of that requirement.
Yeah, so we have to pay around 10%.
Fact, oh, big required kind of thing. I'll make a motion, we accept Article 27 to the one.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, Article 28, we recently discussed, and it's about the amendment to the bond law, the zoning bylaw, Section 315-4, which is a definition of off-site medical marijuana dispensary and registered marijuana dispensary. And the the big thing there is that it's, it doesn't have to be a for, a not-for-profit, yes?
This is a question for Corinne. I know we have to do this to match the statute, what happens if we don't?
I spoke to Attorney Tellerman about that, he said essentially that we would have, we would not be able to enforce this, and it would, we would just essentially have two ineffective definitions and that would invalidate those, you know, how we would try to enforce the bylaw.
Because people are going to show up not understanding what this means.
Yeah, he was, he essentially said it doesn't matter. Yeah, it's a good, it's a good thing to do, but we can't enforce it anyway, so.
Should we take it as a consent agenda, just knock them both off?
I was, that's what I was wondering too, yeah. Actually, the the other one is, the other one's a more substantive change, I guess.
And it's, it's a, I don't totally know.
It's a 2/3 majority vote, so.
They both are, because they're both zoning. But also they're for two separate reasons, and I don't totally understand all of the nuance about consent agenda, but I don't know if they would necessarily be one together.
No, they should be split, I forgot which ones.
Okay.
Well, I'll vote, I'll move we accept Article 28.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, and then, let me get here. Article 29, it will amend the zoning bylaw section for the design and review, site design and review procedures. And so these are just updated, there's a lot of stuff crossed out that they feel isn't needed. Any, anything to say on this? I know it's just, it's just a zoning bylaw change.
Yes, so the, the Planning Board is recommending removing subsections B and C in their entirety, removing a, the, a portion of subsection A and replacing it. So what currently says shall file with the Planning Board at a regularly scheduled meeting, you know, seven copies, it's the, essentially the requirements for filing site and design review. The purpose of these amendments is to take out any specific criteria from the bylaw that describe filing requirements, and replacing that with, shall be filed by the petitioner with the town clerk as opposed to with the Planning Board, and then pointing the petitioner to looking to the rules and regulations for further information, such as for how many copies they need to file. The reason is that they would like to update their rules and regulations, but if they were to do so, it would conflict with zoning because of how detailed the zoning bylaw is regarding filing petitions, and this information does not have to be in the bylaw, and it's easier for them to update the rules and regulations than it is the bylaw. So it was my recommendation to them and supported by Attorney Tellerman to take, take out unnecessary detail from the bylaw so they're able to be more nimble in how they accept filings in the future. And so then the only other thing that's in here is the subsequent renumbering of the subsection or relettering of the subsections from the removal of B and C.
Okay, and this will make it easier for the, for this committee because then they will be able to set firm timelines for folks.
They, yes, they will update their rules and regulations with the timeline for filing and the holding of public hearings and things like that. And in the future, it will be easier for them if they recognize an issue with that to update their rules and regulations than it is to update the zoning code, which you have to go to town meeting for. To update their rules and regulations, they need to have a public hearing themselves, but then they can vote to adopt it after the public hearing. So it's just a much easier process to move it all into the rules and regulations.
Okay, so hopefully everyone understands that, you know, when developers come in to to look at, you know, site and design review, they have some deadlines, and so it's, this would help clean things up. Any further discussion on this, or, okay?
I move to accept Article 29.
Okay, I'll second that, and all those in favor? Okay. Now we get to Article 30, the town will vote to amend the general bylaws. Section 127-17 discusses dogs as a nuisance to the following. And basically, the wording on this is pretty much the same for mass general law, except it includes and select board policy, which we've, yes?
Yeah, I think this came up last, before this previous dog hearing, when the the dog hearing, or we were asked to have one, and it didn't come about. But we talked to Attorney Tellerman, I believe, and we, or maybe it was Jesse, we had to have, we had to have a hearing before we could even refer the here, refer the investigation. This will allow us to set a policy that says the town manager's office can do it without it. So it makes it much quicker and takes us out of that first step of the process.
Okay, yeah, so we wouldn't have to, to, okay, yes.
Where it says, "he shall provide," it should probably say, "they shall provide that information to the select board."
And so the last sentence in the first paragraph.
Yeah, we shouldn't assume.
The keeper, the dog, it should say, "they shall provide," it's non-sexist language, good, good catch. All right.
I move we accept Article 30 as amended.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right. Article. Wait a second, okay, yeah, Article 31, dogs at athletic fields. And we're basically going to change the wording on this, that no dogs are accepted or allowed except for what was seeing-eye dogs and hearing-eye dogs, to service animals in athletic fields under the jurisdiction of the town of Long Meadow. And hopefully we don't have to specify that comfort animals wouldn't be included, but.
Yeah, that's actually my question, I I forgot to look this up. Is this defined somewhere?
Service animal?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, this is actually something we've had to look into relatively recently due to several incidents at the, well, I don't know if it's several, one each at least, at the adult center and the library, and there's a strict definition of service animals and.
Emotional support animal.
Yeah.
Emotional support animal.
Yes, is not included in a, in a service animal.
Yeah, a service animal needs, you know, special training and certification.
Yes.
Emotional support animal, that's not.
But is it defined in our code?
I don't know if it's defined in our code.
Yeah.
A lot of times they're on a halter, right, they have, I forget what they call that sort of.
They do have to be leashed unless they, it is part of the service that they provide, that they would be not leashed. And at all times, they need to be under verbal control by their owner. There's, it's pretty strict. And otherwise, if, even if there's a claim that they are, and they have to have documentation as well.
But I, I don't think that's in our, in our code.
It might not be defined in our bylaws, I haven't pulled them up.
Yeah, they're pretty standard, I mean, it used to be easier because then they all had, like a person who was blind would hold the handle of the, you know, the dog would be in this halter kind of.
Oh, yeah, no.
But but now that's changed.
Yeah, I mean, we probably do need to find it in our bylaws, I mean, I think, you know, those definitions come from HUD guidance about, you know, service dogs.
And we should roll it in, or we could point to as defined by X, but.
Exactly.
Because anybody could say, yeah, this is my service animal.
I don't know that we need to define it in our bylaws, because I don't, I don't know that we need to have repetitive definitions from something, you know, but I think we could point it to the correct legislation that defines service animal already, so we can look, we'll look up what that one is. I made a, actually, a flyer on this recently, so I will be able to pull that up pretty easily.
Could it be service animal, if that points to definitions as as registered with X or whatever, just to.
So they would need to, so they would, that's a good point, that we could ask if they have, they would need to show the registration or something, you know.
Well, I think we can't, that's part of it, is that you can't ask for the registration, or you can't ask what service they're trained to perform or something due to like privacy issues. But this, as I said, there was a memo that we circulated about this recently with town departments. If you're interested, we can share that with you too, and we will amend this proposed language to include.
All right, so they don't have a standard certification or license or card they show? Because I know when they go on an airplane or so, where they'd have to show them that this, you know, that's been through training. I mean, you know, because I, you know, a lot of folks, it gets to be, it would be difficult for an officer who was called to a playing field because they say, well, the person has a dog here. You know, how do we know for sure it's a service dog versus a emotional support dog? And so, you know, hopefully we can find as easy a way as possible for an officer to determine that.
Yeah, I think you have to take them at their word, unless, unless the dog is, you know, not showing, that they're either not leashed and they're not performing any action being not leashed, or they're not under verbal control. That, that's the recommendation that we have been giving to our town departments.
That's a little bit wide open, I'd say.
I, I think it's meant for, for privacy.
And to, you know, stop folks that need service animals from being harassed and asked for.
Discriminated, yeah.
Yeah, but how do you enforce it? If a person says, oh, this is my, my dog.
Well, I mean, I think there's also kind of a reasonableness to it, right? So if you are, if, you know, it's very clear that they're not a service animal, I mean, service animals, watching how they're, right, behaving or acting, you can tell.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, you know, I think a person who knows the difference would be able to pick it up pretty quickly. So hopefully our, our officers have that kind of training. Because they would be the only ones who'd have to enforce this, they would have to be a police officer.
Yeah.
So they'd have to be able to determine, so we'd have to give them some guidance. Or, you know, as long as they feel comfortable with it, and maybe we could ask the chief, the chief of police if, if this is going to be an issue for them, if there's any more clarification we need on this bylaw. Does that make sense?
The biggest thing of the bylaw is changing the jurisdiction from the school committee to the town of Long Meadow to reflect the town of Long Meadow being in charge of athletic facilities. But you're, you're absolutely right in the fact that we could look into changing that language to make it more current. I think that's the crux of the conversation right now.
Yes, including the citation in there, yeah.
All right, so with that in mind, do we want to vote this in? For, no, I'd rather wait until you, okay, let's do that.
And so just for clarification, you'd rather wait, and and what would you, you'd like to see the citation and anything else?
Yeah, I want to see how we're wording it.
Okay, I, I was not planning on redrafting anything except for adding that citation. Are you interested in seeing this memo that we distributed to town staff that talks about the service animal?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I can, I can make a suggestion.
Great.
Okay, good, better to get it ordered now than before we.
And I checked, it wasn't defined in the bylaws.
Yeah.
I knew the answer.
Yeah.
Okay, so then let's move on to Article 32, to see if the town will authorize the select board to initiate the process of seeking to aggregate electrical load through a community choice aggregation program and contract for Long Meadow residents. So this is something that was, you know, given to us by a committee that works for the select board without much explanation, and do we have any explanation this evening about?
I can give you explanation for that, Tom, that, that the, the process is, is, I think, threefold. But the first step is, the town has to authorize just what this is, the, the, the select board in this case, in our case, town council, whatever, to, to begin the process of seeking aggregation. Now, it doesn't say how, it doesn't say when or what, but we've got to be authorized to begin the process. This has nothing to do with accepting it, buying into it, just beginning the process. The second step would be, the, the select board, based on this, could then go create whatever we deem appropriate. Maybe it's a committee or something that comes up with some system of developing, it's called a rate case, which is, we want to buy electricity that represents 100% renewable or 51%, which is, I think, the state minimum now, or whatever it is, that, we want to do whatever. You know, whatever we do, we come up with a rate case, or this committee comes up with a rate case, which then gets submitted to the Department of Public Utilities, who then takes 14 to 16 to 20 months, however long they take, to review this and approve it as a rate case, at which point it then comes back to the town to accept that. And it may, may even come back to the town before it goes to the DPU, I don't know. But there, there's like three chances for residents to vote on whether we do this. And ultimately, nobody has to buy into the accepting this rate. It's like the letters you get from, you know, anybody else at home that says you want to buy cheaper electricity. So the, the first step, though, is a very generic, this is taken from the town of Medford almost word for word, you know, that says, just authorizes the select board to start a process. The process can be a one-year process, it can be a multi-year process, and I noted in Lynn's note that, you know, it's going to be a while, which is fine, but that means we can start it. Without this, we can't, and frankly, I, I don't think that we would want to be any more specific than this in our first pass.
Okay, and Josh?
Yeah, thanks for the explanation, Mark, because my, I was curious, and I, I know Lynn said there will be another vote for the feasibility study. So I just, what is this, what, what does this do?
The state, the Department of Public Utility, no, it's not, it's the Department of Energy, DOER, Department of Energy Resources, requires towns to, if you will, set the process in motion to go after aggregate, you know, electrical aggregation. And that's all this does, it sets a process in motion. It in no way adopts it, it doesn't set what the policies are, it doesn't set what the rate case is, it just sets a process in motion.
So it's not, it's not spending any money even?
It doesn't spend a dime.
It gives us the right to do a committee every once?
Right, and without that, in theory, we can't create a committee to look into electrical rates because that's the purview of the DPU C and regulated utilities. But with this approval, we can go about starting to do that.
Corinne, do you, can you shed any light on why Lynn thinks this is premature?
Yes, so essentially, my understanding is that it's because the, the process that the town would want to follow, so not that, not that it has to follow, but the internal process hasn't been defined. So who, who would sit on the task force, where, like, what, what would the, where would the funding source be to fund work, you know, hiring a consultant for this, et cetera? Like, none of that seems to have, I haven't been part of those conversations, but my understanding is that they haven't happened, or maybe they've only happened at a very high level, if at all. So it's not that, it's exactly that it's premature, not that she doesn't think it should be there.
But if we're not actually doing any of those things, if we're, or we can't do any of that without doing this?
So, right, well, you could, you could talk about, you could develop a plan. And I think that Lynn's concern, again, I might not be speaking to the entirety of her concerns, but I think Lynn's concern is that the impression that town meeting would have if this is approved at town meeting, the impression that the voters would leave with and then subsequently the community would have is that this is something that would start happening right away, and we would start to get phone calls about it, we're not hearing anything about this, what's the news? When in reality, we think everyone here understands how long it can take something like this to get up and running. And so I think, from her perspective, it was better to have some sort of plan in place before we signify in such a public venue that this is something that you would be moving forward with.
The 50 people at the, that'll be here.
At the end of the town meeting, yeah.
I think we can be very clear on that this is, and one of us can get up and talk about how, people understand how long these things take, like the pipeline, we paid for a lawyer two years ago, and we're still sitting, waiting to see what happens, I.
Yeah, I think people need to understand. Yeah, I think people need to understand that. I mean, from what everything I heard, and I think Josh, you were, or Daniel were the same thing, it's a multi-year process, you know, and, and if we don't start for six months, it's six months later down the road, and, and all this does is then allows us to start on our schedule and not start on a town meeting schedule that may come up again, and that's all, all this is doing, saying, okay, you're authorized, if you get it going in February, that's great, or March or April, but you don't have to wait until after the next town meeting. To me, that's a, a big deal, because it allows us to pursue one of our goals, otherwise, you know, we can talk in the broadest of senses, but we can't do anything substantial, and frankly, I'm not sure what we really are allowed to do based on the restrictions by the D O E R.
Well, I, I think I'd agree with Lynn, the town manager, and Tars, you know, moving forward on this before we have enough information, I mean, I, I appreciate your, you know, short description of what this is, but I, I really, when I first got it, I was questioning, I was scratching my head, I'm like, they're not even explaining what this thing is, and the, the Energy and Sustainability Committee should come and give a presentation to us to let us know what, what's going on with this. I, I, I mean, it, it sounds good, but, you know, part of what you're saying, I have some questions, like, does this mean, you know, vendors of electricity are going to be contacting the board constantly, saying, you know, well, we want to be on the, we want to, you know, people, we want to provide for your town, and, you know, is that going to, how much time is that going to take from us if they come to us? I mean, is it going to be the Energy and Sustainability Committee that's going to sort of sort through these things? I mean, I, I don't know, I just, it, I, it's hard for me to vote on this at all, because I don't, all I have is a short description by you, and other than that, I'm clueless. I don't know if you guys feel like you know what's going on.
Well, I think the Energy and Sustainability Committee sent us an email a month or two ago, explaining all of this, and, and, and I, I am liaison to the committee, and I know that they are planning on coming in, I think, next meeting perhaps, to talk more about it. But I, I mean, I agree with Mark that this seems like a box that just needs to be checked, and then we have control, more control over how this process will play out. I think a lot of the things that you were, just, you know, the questions you were asking, I think a lot of that will probably be addressed in a feasibility study, which is, you know, the next step that Lynn proposed. So, I mean, I'm, I'm for, I, I think I'm for putting this article on the, on the warrant and getting this process started.
Tom, we do have another meeting, if you want Lynn to be here to talk it through, we could wait till the next one.
Yeah, yeah, we could, because I'd like to hear from her, she, her feelings, she seemed pretty strong that we should probably delay this a little bit, and I'd like to know more about that, but I would like to know more about exactly, you know, what this means. I mean, I know very little. I, I know that, you know, like in Vermont, they send these things saying, if you want all your electricity from Calmanure, you know, you can buy from our company, and, you know, I think it's good to give people those options, but I wish I had had an explanation from our committee that's, you know, the Energy and Sustainability, you know, I, I mean, they're sort of, if they come next meeting, as long as, I'd like to know more about it before we vote on it, I just feel like I'm just, it's guesswork for me, and, yeah.
I would, I would just say, you know, to beneath's point and then Mark's point, it's, it's really just giving us a, a starting point where it's not going to cost the town money, you know, at this point in time. It just allows us to start the conversation now, get organized, otherwise, we're going to have to wait until another six months, right, until the next town meeting, so I don't think there's any harm in doing it. And when they are going to come in front of us as well, the, the committee, I believe, so, I mean, I thought it was a good presentation, a good idea that Mark brought up, and I think it's worth looking into, but to your point, yeah, we don't have a lot of the information right now, but it's just, rather than kick the can down the road, we can address it, you know, sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah, so, all right, so we'll just, if we let, let Article 32 ride, we'll have Lynn speak on it, and then we'll have the Energy and Sustainability folks explain it to us a little bit better, I appreciate that. So we've made it through, I wish this was the last time, it's not, it's just the first time, we'll be doing this again. Any other questions, yes?
I just want to confirm, because I was trying to take notes here, which ones we did not adopt, so Mike?
Yep, I have it right now, let me just pull it back up.
I've got six, the current six, 12, 20, which needs a number for OPEV that we didn't talk about, 31, which is the service animal definition, and 32, those the ones that you have that, and other than those, and we reorganized the others, but those are the ones.
Correct, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, great. So we will move on to the next item of the agenda, which is a one-day liquor license for St. Mary's Guild. We have a motion for their October 26 event.
Yeah, I move to approve the one-day liquor license for October 26, 2023, that was submitted by St. Mary's Ladies Guild.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. The next is a street closer application for Farmington Eaton Block Party application, Farmington Road between Rugby and Oxford, on October 24th.
I'm going to approve the October 24th application for the Farmington Eaton Block Party.
Second.
Two to six, it's rain date of 15, October 15th, you have a second?
Oh, yeah.
I think I said it October 24th, October 14th.
14th and then the 15th is rain date, so, all right, all those in favor? And Greenacre Block Party application, have a motion on that?
I'm going to approve the October 21st application for Greenacre Avenue Block Party.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And now the outstanding charter review committee recommendations, which, yeah.
What happened to Ellington Eaton Block Party?
Oh.
We did that one first.
No, we did Farmington.
We did Farmington?
Farmington is different from Ellington.
Oh, I don't think we did Greenacre.
Oh.
You just did.
Oh, we did Greenacre.
I think it's between Ellington and.
Do we do Farmington?
It's, it's both roads, it's both roads, Ellington.
Yeah. I don't know why it's written like that.
Okay. We all, Mike, I'll just check, do we have all three?
Where else at, yeah?
Okay, good.
There's only two.
There's only two.
But there's two road closers associated with one, one is.
Thank you. After going through that warrant, I get a little punchy.
It's okay.
I don't keep track. The outstanding charter review committee recommendations, and these are just, it's so great that we have the, the Charter Review Committee, we made, gave us this report in 2018, you know, which was a long time ago, and we kept trying to get all these processed. Last time I was the chair, I thought we'd finished them, there were two sections, 33C and 66B, that were, had to do with the school committee, and they decided they were going to take no action on that, and we said, that's what it is. What's remaining is related to financial matters, and it's 211A and B, 212, 213, 76A, 76C, 79, 212, and 213, which are all postponed from being voted on because of COVID-19, and they were, you know, in the warrant of the October 2020 meeting, but we couldn't meet them, and it has to do with capital planning, town building committees, and finance committee, and audit committee, and, so, we had approved this prior, I mean, do we want to just, you know? Go ahead, yes.
So, Tom, if I may, this is on the goals document, so we just are going to periodically bring it back to make sure we don't lose sight of it, and the recommendation may be from the select board to move it forward to the annual town meeting warrant to, to clear those up, or you may want to review the recommendations and see if there's anything outdated since that came about, so it's really up to.
I mean, it's, of course, it's easier just to say, let's put it on the next warrant, but yes, Mark.
Yeah, it is easier to do that, but frankly, these were a mess, and based on the recommendations, I wouldn't vote for it, much less vote to put it, I wouldn't vote to put it on the warrant, much less vote to put it, to, to approve them. I think we need to look at them again. This was done, at the time, there was a lot of this, disagreements within that committee. The, the whole process of capital planning was, actually, if you recall, it was done without, before Lynn had a chance to have any input, what we're doing with the capital process now, before there was a, a permanent building committee that's now gotten involved, I think somebody, and I'm more than happy to do it, take a look at it and say, what do we do in 2023 versus 2019, when this first came up? I don't, I, I don't think there are, you know, any of them are appropriate at this point.
So you're just going to cancel on that consensus?
So, yeah, this, this came up, I brought it up when I was first chair, too, and everything, it's a mess.
It's a mess.
Yeah, it is.
Well, why didn't you send them out to us?
Uh, yeah, because there's a lot of questions about it still, and there was, I remember talking to Pete Landon about some things with capital planning, so I think that it would be smart to figure all of it out.
All right.
And also, I was remiss in sharing a copy of the report if those new members haven't read it yet, but it's on the select board page, I believe, but I'll send you guys a, a copy of it as well, so, I just realized that that wasn't also attached with it, that would have been helpful for some.
Okay.
It's not going to help.
So I guess, in 2020, that must have been when I was chair, that was a while ago, and so we would have, this should have been done, but we had COVID, and so, yeah, do, would you guys think we should start with just getting a copy of these?
Think that might help? Think that might help?
Okay. You can't, that should be enough on there, right? You can see on the screen, yeah, there's not much to say, to know what's going on with the audit committee from that. So let's, let's start that process, if we can get copies to every other member, all members of the select board, and then we'll put on their future agenda for the charter review recommendations from 2018, and we'll get Lynn's input, sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, anything that we, was adopted at the 2021 town meeting, we changed a few sections there that was voted by town meeting, should all be incorporated into the charter of the general code at this point, so everything should be up to date there.
The problem is, Tom, we've got to be careful, because we can't make changes to the charter per se, we can make clarifications and rearrangements, but, you know, major changes require a charter commission, which is a whole other process.
Well, we're just following the recommendations from the last charter commission, we're not coming up with this stuff, it's all.
It wasn't the charter commission, it was the Charter Review Committee, which is a big difference.
That's right, yes, that's a big difference, yes. You know, so, it's like the difference between a, a 10K and a, and a half marathon, okay? So, or maybe a full marathon. Okay, the next thing we have is the Citizen of the Year accommodation process, and so we have, you know, in the past board, we said, well, maybe we should have two different kinds of awards, one is for the Citizen Year, who's kind of a lifeline, life, lifetime achievement award, for folks who really contributed over a long period of time, and then there's also folks who contribute quite a bit to the town in one year, there might be something they do that we want to recognize them for, like winning the voice or something like that. So we've come up with a form, well, not we, but the important folks who do all the work came up with, Mike, two different forms to look at, to want to talk, to look at civic engagement for the one-year award, and then one for the Citizen of the Year.
So the, the form was actually active last year for it, but the, the main issue that came up is, didn't happen two years ago when we started doing this process, we had eight, nine, 10 nominations, but last year and the year before, the year before there was none, last year there was two, and because of the guidelines that, that are kind of in the form, it, it limits who's eligible for them, like, it says, people who aren't, correct, Josh, if you want to add, because you were part of that conversation.
So, yeah, I, the chairs of all the elected committees were on, we all met to pick people last year, and it was a disaster, because it's really unclear, and this is important, people are, people care about who gets this, and it's a real honor to get it, and it was really hard to pick someone, we, we met for a really long time, and has this already been changed? Because one of the things was, you couldn't win one of them if you had ever been an elected official, the way we read it, and.
No, no, that's not.
If you were currently elected.
You can't be.
It was if you ever been.
You could be an elected official.
No, because I know Arlene Miller's one, Citizen of the Year, and she wasn't elected.
It didn't, it was changed, I remember this coming up last year.
That would have caused some arguments, yeah.
Well, the form on it was, the form had it wrong, so people didn't understand what they were, they could nominate for, and then, and also, I don't know, because we have, it's one year versus lifetime, and it's just not very clear.
I don't remember changing anything, but I do remember that we interpreted, interpreted that.
I mean, as it is now, it clearly says current, it did not say that last year.
Yes, Mark, go on.
You know, frankly, and this is all due respect to Richard Foster, who got us involved in this thing, we've overcomplicated what was a real nice thing.
Absolutely.
You know, we ought to be going back to what we had, we called it Citizen of the Year, and frankly, it can be whatever we want it to be, you know, whether it's the Citizen of that year, or a lifetime achievement award, but now we've created two different awards, we've got, we've got a real mess, we haven't really done, done anything with them, and, and it's, in my opinion, watered down, what we had was a good thing. I, I think we just ought to go back, call it Long Meadow Person or something, you know, whatever we want to call it, but this whole idea of the disconnect that it was being called Citizen of the Year, but it was really a lifetime achievement award, or a long, many year achievement award, is what caused us to create this mess. And frankly, I don't care about it, and I think we're better off recognizing people who have done sustained support for the town, and if somebody, you know, runs into a burning building and saves somebody, we vote a special commendation for that person, which is what we've done in the past anyway, you know, we've had a couple instances of not quite that, but things like that. So my take on it is, we took a real good thing and screwed it up, and I think we ought to throw it all out and start over.
I think that's right, yeah.
And I think that, you know, before we made these changes, you know, the board just would meet, we'd look at the letters, and we'd, we'd vote, and it was pretty straightforward. The first year, when I was on in the first year, and it seemed pretty straightforward, we voted, we had good, you know, we gave it to somebody, and it's too bad the next two years kind of fell apart, but I, I hope this form will help, I mean.
Also, the first, you're talking about 2021, there was nine nominations, it was Meals on Wheels drivers, and a bunch of people who kind of fit the criteria for getting the awards, and it was easy.
Last year, we wanted to, we wanted to name the election workers, but nobody had nominated them, and it was, yeah, and, but the problem is here, the citizen commendation is for an act, but all the nominations were for a lifetime service, it's, so we just need to make it less clear, because the more specific you make it, the dumber the argument is about it. So I think we're better off, I, I'm happy to rework those, if that's okay with people, and we'll just, we'll make it simple.
Looks like Mike nominated himself.
Yes, I saw that, Joe. It's an example name, man.
Oh, yeah.
Come on, he's pretty great.
It just, it just auto-populates on one.
I guess what I didn't understand, Josh, maybe you can bring clarity to this, at some point Lynn said, the select board can't appoint, can't make the selection, and that was the beginning of, I mean, not, not that I really want to make the selection, but then all of a sudden became, we needed a committee, and we needed, you know, like you said, all this not, not, you know, as opposed to, you know, literally, we had a, a, a meeting, and, you know, maybe we weren't supposed to do it in executive session, but we did.
I think that's what it came down to.
Yeah, that was the issue, yeah, we did.
It can't be an executive session.
Privately, you can surprise the person, no surprises allowed, okay, unless it's, unless there's no court.
So all the chairs, okay, so the chairs met because they're not.
There's no court.
It's not, it's not a body, yeah.
You don't have to, it's not a body, so.
So that's why there was a vote in 21.
Yeah. Not that anyone ever turned us in for making that decision, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with everything that's been said, I think. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with everything that's been said, I think this should be a Citizen of the Year award, I don't think we need to do the citizen, you know, commendation award, get rid of that. Citizen of the Year, and then, you know, for the process, you know, executive session, apparently, you know, that's not the way you're supposed to do it, so let's clean that up.
There's very specific ways you can get out of a public, open meeting.
Right.
Maybe we can talk to Attorney Town about
Talking about character. That's not, that's not, that's not an exemption, talking about character.
I think it really
Kick him out of town.
If we just narrowed it down to one award, Citizen of the Year.
That's, that goes a long way.
That would go a long way. That'd make it easier, because, you know, this is what you're applying, and if you, a special commendation, you know, someone should send us a letter saying, hey, this person did this, you know?
And if it's less clear, if there is somebody that runs into a burning building, and that year we decide that they should be Citizen of the Year, we can make them Citizen of the Year.
And, and you could line it up so that there are times where you do give commendations out at town meetings if you wish, if something happens around that time.
Generally, we've given them out at select board meetings.
At select board meetings, yeah, exactly.
Okay, does someone want to forward a motion to
I don't even know what the motion should be. I'll, I'll rework the memo, and we can, we can vote on a new policy, or voting on whatever you have, the other thing.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
I asked Josh to rewrite a, rewrite a policy on citizens
Citizen of the Year.
Recognition policy, citizen recognition, that's what we're calling it.
And the, okay, good, so we'll get to close to the end, any comments on the correspondence that we've received? And if not, then we will, for a motion to adjourn, it's almost, it's 10, oh, eight of 10?
Who will we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, discussion? No, all those in favor? Okay, good night, everyone, thank you for joining us.